All right, welcome everyone to the Pickens County Board of County Commissioners Work Session on Wednesday, November 12th. We usually hold these on Tuesday, but yesterday was Veterans Day and we had a lovely service out on the Veterans Park here, right outside our building. It was well attended and a beautiful day. So let's get started with Staffing Community Presentations. We have a quarterly update with APSHA, the Aspen-Pickens County Housing Authority, and we'll welcome the Director, Matthew Gillen, up. And I don't know if our housing staff wishes to join. We'll call you up if you like, or you can join whenever you like. Yeah. Matthew, thanks. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much, Matthew Gillen, Director. And we can take this conversation wherever you want to take it. But so I'm ready for that. But Kelly, is there anything which I clearly want?
I mean, I had suggested, well, I'll let you know, we've discussed the budget and approved the budget. So that's, that's all good. That's moving forward as presented in our 2026 budget adoption, which will happen in December. And then I thought maybe the staff would have great, or sorry, the rest of the board would have great interest in an update on the capital reserve study and the findings from that and current conversations about future direction. And then any updates you think would be valuable.
Yeah, so I will just say for the budget, thank you very much. And the big change was the capital, excuse me, the essential repairs grant program. We are now making that a permanent thing. So thank you very much for that. And I think it's been a great success. We've paid out over $600,000. There's been over 121 grants approved. The average repair cost was $10,000 and the average actual grant given was like nearly $6,000. So it's had quite a good impact on, on maintaining our properties. So we're very excited by that. The most common things we've seen are windows and hot water heaters. So that's good information as well for us as we sort of try and think how we can, now that we know that what the most important, most common things are, how can we make that as efficient as possible? And then the other thing Kelly wanted to talk about, should I have some information, was so it was nearly two years ago now, but APSHA paid for capital reserve studies on APSHA properties. So I can walk you through that a little bit. The, sort of the headline is of the HOAs we looked at, four were poor to average of assessment, 17 were average, five were average to good, and one was good. So we weren't as in terrible shape as we thought we were. So that was kind of, that was kind of interesting. So I can walk you through some of the numbers from that. So we had 27 HOAs participated, and that is 391 individual units. Half of the HOAs are in positive balance, and we're seeing average estimated of costs for about 162,000 per HOA. And that's mostly in the building envelope. That's 68% of the capital burden. And, you know, we're looking at building age, lack of knowledge, affordability issues. So some of the, so it was really, it was interesting for us. So the, the sort of the bottom line is the extrapolated costs. If we, if all the HOAs were to do all of that work, which we're seeing in the next 10 years or so, it would be between $7 and $12 million. So, and that is, is the responsibility of the HOAs. But we felt it was important to give them the tools to look at how we, the best way to do that. So that, because of those studies, we are taking even more emphasis on HOA education. I hope you've been seeing that we're doing almost monthly HOH education seminars and board training opportunities and sharing information to HOAs. And we're also going to be developing homeowner classes as part of the strategic plan before you can buy an APSHA property to really ram home your rights and responsibilities. And we're also trying to work with HOAs on maintenance schedules. And in the new year, we'll also be having our normal HOA attorney come and do some office hours to work with them, with HOAs on some of their foundational documents to make sure those are up to scratch. So we're, we're trying to use this information to help the HOAs to help themselves. So we've had, we had HOA seminars on October 15th. We had one today, and we'll be doing them again in January, February. We also had an HOA coffee morning on October 14th. And we're also have a new, well, we've had one. We have an HOA newsletter now. So it's a newsletter specifically for HOAs, and that'll be going out twice a year. And we're trying to also develop ways for the HOAs to talk amongst themselves, to develop some of these opportunities.
Any questions for Matthew right now? This is, I think, the first time we're hearing as a board about the capital reserve study findings, which are much more affordable than any of us had anticipated for the past 10 years, I think.
Yeah, there's definitely, you know, there's work to be done, but it was, it was, it was okay. You know, I think we can help these HOAs plan it out and take it from there and see how we're doing in the next few years.
Matthew, are any of them reaching like a critical failure of any of their
I don't think so. There was one that was listed as poor, but I don't have the specifics. Do I have the specifics on that one in particular? I don't, I don't think any of them are critical as such. They need to keep working on maintaining it. It was interesting that most of the recommended expenses were, you know, building envelopes, so that's roof, foundations, and exterior siding. So that was, you know, that's a very good piece of information to know exactly where some of these issues are. And this was about half the HOAs who were eligible for it chose to participate. So this wasn't all the HOAs by any means. And most of the ones we've talked to and said, hey, why didn't you participate, participate, excuse me, they said, hey, I think we've got a handle on this. So that's good to know as well.
And many of those that didn't participate are professionally managed, right?
Right, right.
Okay. Any other questions for Matthew? This is years of priority and work to understand this. Francie?
So you don't think that the people who didn't respond, the HOAs who didn't respond to the survey, you don't think that they're significantly undercapitalized?
Right. The ones we've talked to said, hey, why didn't you participate? They generally said, we think we've got a pretty good handle on this. But, you know, we, it's hard for us to check on that, but yeah. But this was a voluntary program. We paid about $170,000 from APSHA money to make this available for the, for the property owners, for the HOAs. And we think that is, was very money well spent.
Well, good. Great.
And if I remember, one of the other findings was that those who had participated 10 years ago in the capital reserve study performed better
Right.
this time around. So lessons, lessons learned, which is good.
And then the other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit, highlight to you, for you, is we had, we've had a compliance manager now for nearly two years. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on that. So Jackie joined us from, from the FBI, where she was a case manager and also worked on a lot on their internal procedures. And since Jackie joined us in the beginning of April 2023, she's had about 452 compliance actions. So that was initially audits. We did a bunch of random audits, and we found that 90% of the people we audited were fully in compliance. She had seven or eight cases where needed a bit of further work. And then I think almost all of those resolved. So we knew we had very clear information that almost everybody was fully in compliance, which is a good counterbalance to some of the narratives at the time. Since then, she's been following up on individual complaints or some of the other things. And we've redeveloped the affidavit, the affidavit this year. We are asking for extra information. We're asking for W-2s, which is, I think, again, important for us to double check that everybody is following, following the rules. So you could fill out the application, the affidavit through HomeTrac, and then upload your, your W-2s and tax information. And that gave us a solid basis to check on people's eligibility for the program. Jackie did find a small number of units which we believed were not in compliance. So it was about 14 over the past two years. Of those 14, they've all agreed to sell, or they all agreed to sell. So that is a tremendous reinvestment into the community, I think going on for tens of millions of dollars to the program. And the other interesting thing I'd also like to flag is they agreed to sell. None of those cases went to, were appealed. None of them went to the hearing officer, and none of them went to the APSHA board or to the court system. So those were very clean, smooth processes. People said, okay, I think, I guess you're right. We're not in compliance, or we were choosing to sell. We do have a few cases in the court system, which we reviewed in executive session at the last APSHA board meeting. But generally, this, I think, it's gone extremely smoothly, having a full-time compliance officer.
Questions? Greg?
Quick question, just regarding oversight of the compliance officer. What are the safeguards with the oversight of this compliance officer and their relationships with clients?
Jackie has, you know, she reports to Bethany, who's the deputy, and then to me. We meet with her regularly to discuss cases. I see her, she sees me, CCs me on all notices of investigation or notices of violation. So I do see them. I, we do sometimes, people don't like being asked for information. Like, they, they don't like it. They do see it as a, you know, we see it as part of the stewardship of the program, and it has to be done. But people often don't like it. So they do sometimes feel like, we're trying to be as clear as possible what, what we're asking for. And that is sometimes seen as kind of abrupt, but, you know, we have to be clear in what we're asking for, so we can get it resolved as quickly as possible. So, so we're constantly trying to adjust that process to make it as easy as possible for, for the person we're asking information for. But, you know, when it comes down to it, we are asking for information. So once it goes through the notice of investigation or notice of violation, the notice of violation is our, our assessment of the situation. And then if the, the resident doesn't like that, they can ask for an appeal to the hearing officer. And the hearing officer is hired recently by the board, and he is completely independent. He's paying, he reports directly to the board, not to us. Hearing officer will do a hearing. And then if fines in APSHA's favor, the, the resident has the option of appealing that to the APSHA board. And then after all that, if they're still not convinced, they can go to the court system. But I, but I think the hearing officer process is really good, that it gives us an alternative to going straight to court. It gives everybody an opportunity to resolve the situation with, without going straight to court, which is expensive for everybody.
Right, great. Thanks for that.
And I'll just note, the APSHA board did do a request for proposals for hearing officers before we selected.
Got it. Great, thanks.
And then also, I think, I showed you all the strategic plan. And then for the APSHA work plan through August 2026, we've taken the four buckets and put every, from the strategic plan, and harmonized the work plan with the strategic plan. So working on a pre, a pre-qualification education program for APSHA owners, excuse me, which will go under compliance. We're working on quality, which is the safe, durable housing inventory and excellent customer service. So we have a few things in there, legal resources for HOAs, working with COR for sustainability grant money. Oh, and then a good one, thanks to you all last year, with the APSHA, the total revamp of the APSHA website will be very early next year. We've had a look at it. It looks really good. And hopefully that isn't just in contrast to the fact that the current one looks really bad. I think, I think it independently, objectively looks really good.
And it works.
Yeah.
No dead ends. Right.
And then we're working, or we'll be assessing and working with HOAs on home insurance, getting some visibility from HOAs on their current insurance situation. Again, we anecdotally hear that insurance, both for HOAs and individual, individual homes is becoming much more expensive. And we'll be working with HOAs to get a much better handle on that and see who's paying what and with what companies. And maybe that'll get some information for us on some, some of the, the better companies that work in this area. And then we are also looking at a data dashboard on the website, and that's under leadership. And then also looking at in the next few months, should there be options for people who work in all valley, all valley public institutions, you know, is there a way for them to gain access to APSHA housing as well? And that was Kelly's request. So we'll be looking at that as well.
I would, I would just clarify, that's our board's request.
Excuse me. As the representative of the board, Kelly communicated that. And then Greg, the, I just want to ask, the last time we were up here, you mentioned, do we have a history of APSHA written down anywhere? And we didn't at the time. But I have contracted, asked, I'm working with some public policy grad students from the College of William Mary who are working on a history of APSHA for us. And we've given them all our documents we could find, and they're doing some interviews, and they'll be presenting that at the APSHA board meeting in December. So we'll see, see what that looks like.
Right, yeah. Hopefully we'll have a chance to see it. And, and I'm, the thing that was most interesting, the history's great.
Yeah.
The actual history of the, the, the attempts
Right.
and the failures and the corrections would be beneficial to anybody who's contemplating doing housing anywhere. And that will be pure gold.
Right.
Because I think we've made every possible mistake, and we've corrected them along the way. No, that's just how it works, right? Over 50 years. While some people are just starting, some communities are just beginning, and they're making those mistakes that we would all recognize right off the bat. Maybe mistakes isn't the right word, but it's, you know, how do you do this? And how, what do you avoid? And what do you think about unintended consequences? We've been there, and that's super, super valuable. So thank you for that. I could ask one more?
Yeah, please.
And that was just about insurance. Like, how large a pool do you need before you can self-insure? I'm just looking at all these HOAs and all these individuals and, you know, are the insurance companies adding value, or are they just pulling money out?
I think that's more of a philosophical question.
Well, it's a question for an insurance, you know, entrepreneur. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Thanks. No, it's a good one. And it's definitely something we're
I was thinking APSHA, are you having the structure? Might be the vehicle. So.
Thank you. And just maybe some of the ideas coming out of the capital reserve study, what, you know, what's being contemplated? Are HOAs reaching out and saying, can you help us pay for this?
Yeah, I want to have Emily come up just for a sec, because she's been working specifically on this. Thank you, Emily.
And Emily, formerly of Pickens County. Nice to see you. Nice to be back.
Yes. I think what we hear most from HOAs that reach out is that they, they are struggling to keep up with everything, just costs in, in general. And that is insurance combined with the needed repairs and all that. I, I think because historically, APSHA has not stepped in and done anything, that the expectation is that they're kind of on their own, but like, they, they are asking for help. I'll say that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, if you want to provide more color to that, that would be helpful, like types of requests.
Yeah, I think it's, I think part of the problem is that there's been deferred maintenance, right? And then someone new moves in and has a brand new mortgage, a brand new home that might need work on the interior of home. That's the responsibility of the individual homeowner, and then is hit with a special assessment. And then they're also having to come up with $30,000 for a roof repair coming up this spring, speaking about one HOA that we've heard from. And so I think that just feels like the people before them didn't pay in. And so I think it's a, I think mostly they're surprised that it's like this extra cost, like right away. And so I think it's a, I think mostly they're surprised that it's like this extra cost, like, right away, or something like that, if that helps.
Other questions?
And then, I'll just add, because we just had, right before this, a HOA seminar on capital reserve studies. And he showed, like, a very interesting graph, and it was from Denver, but he said the same would apply here, which it showed, like, the amount that cost of, like, a roof replacement had gone up since 2020 till now, over the past five years. And, I mean, it was like 40%. So I think just the rising costs in that sense are really challenging. And if you had a reserve study done five years ago and you have one done now, the projected cost for your repairs is going to look totally different because of that.
Any questions on this from board members? All right, I think we're interested in possible solutions as they get cultivated, so thank you. All right, is that it?
Thank you very much.
Early on, you said that you were going to continue with the, what do we call that fund that?
The grant program.
The what?
The grant.
Yeah, for improvements and stuff. And so does that mean that we'll be committed to providing the same amount of money every year as we did the first year?
Hopefully, yeah.
So you'll come to us and ask for that specifically, or are you counting on that? Where are we?
I think we're counting on it.
But we haven't said yes yet.
I think you have.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Oh, and I'll just note, I know this is a little, Ashley, you can come sit down. Yeah, and I just, yeah, go ahead, clarify, and then I'll just, one separate topic I'll bring up.
Good afternoon, Francie. We typically pull APSCA's operating budget out of the general fund. And then we, historically, for the last two years, have pulled the $200,000 for the repair and maintenance out of a different fund. This year, it was out of the property tax fund, the, for housing. And then for 2026, what you saw in the budget was a $250, $250,000 input into the property tax, because APSCA has requested to be increased by $50,000.
Why are we taking it out of the tax money, the housing tax fund?
We wanted to be.
Specifically said, keeping up, part of the ballot measure specifically said maintaining current whatever.
Yeah, so we just wanted to be sensitive to how much we pull out of the general fund. And so, since this is an allowable use of the property tax, we thought we could put it in there to reduce the, the pull on the general fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I just want to note, so APSCA will be managing, but it comes out of a fund that's managed by the city improvements to Truscott. There's some major renovations going to siding and drainage and things like that, so that's also a big project.
Yeah, we'll be spending about a million dollars on a Truscott, calling it siding. But once you take off that siding, you're not really sure what's underneath, so that'll, that'll be interesting. But we've, we've budgeted a million dollars for that to, to improve that product.
All right, there's no other questions? Great to see you.
Great, thanks very much.
Thanks, thanks for coming in. Thanks for being so thorough.
All right, next up, we are going to spend a big chunk of the afternoon discussing 2026 Healthy Community Fund grant recommendations. And I will give the team, why don't we take a two-minute break? We'll give the team a minute to set up. All right, welcome back to the Picken County Board of County Commissioners' work session on Wednesday, November 12. We are going to hear 2026 grant recommendations for the Healthy Community Fund. And I will turn it over to Sam and Lisa.
Great. I'm Sam Landergasper. I'm Deputy Director of Human Services. I also help oversee the grant program for the Healthy Community Fund, and.
Red light on, please, yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that. Lisa Yorker, Grants Analyst, and I work on the Healthy Community Fund.
All right, and today we are going to go over the grant recommendations from the Citizen Grant Review Committee for the 2026 Healthy Community Fund Grant Program. We're going to start kind of running through the information in the agenda item summary. And then we will pull up the spreadsheet so we can go goal area by goal area and see if anyone has questions about any of the recommendations. First off, we, on this page here, you'll see the Healthy Community Fund's recently, the new logo, which we're pretty happy about. Got a little refresh, so we wanted to share that with everybody. Go to the next page. And you all have seen this very recently, last week, when Lindsay came here to speak with you. So, but we do like to start off, just in case anyone's listening, with a brief history of the Healthy Community Fund, so everybody's on the same page. You know, really, starting in 2002, was the first year that the mill levy was approved by voters. At that time, it was funding nine organizations, Health and Human Services, and then 22% of Senior Services. Second mill levy was in 2006, when it had grown to 29 organizations being funded. Third mill levy in 2011, up to 61. And in our current iteration, which was approved in 2018, it included 5% for management of the fund, 73 organizations funded, and splitting that funding between 46% Health and Human Services, 12% Community Nonprofit, 22% to Public Health, and 15% to Senior Services. We just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of our great new Citizen Grant Review Committee. We had four brand-new members this year, and they were, they got together at the end of September and early October to discuss all of the applications. Just wanted to call out, they did a really great job, really gelled as a group, came up with a really productive way of working together. So just wanted to recognize the work that they did getting these recommendations for you. And so just quick level setting on where we stand with the fund this year. I realize this probably should say Healthy Community Fund funds, but that sounded funny, so I just said Healthy Community Funds. Total revenue for the program this year was 4.3 million. There are some set-asides, so the net funding that was available this year across all of the services, you know, Public Health, Senior Center mandated services, was 4.1 million. And at that time, the projected fund balance was around 316,000. You'll see as we move through these numbers that the Citizen Grant Review Committee is recommending to spend down the fund a bit to fund some of the grants that were requested. All right, and kind of touching again on the allocation methodology, but just putting some numbers to it. That 22% of the, that funds the core public health functions was around $900,000. The 46% allocated for Health and Human Services agencies was around 1.9 million. Senior Services received around 615,000. The Community Nonprofit, or CNP, area of the grant program was around 492,000. And up to 205,000 could be used for the management of the fund. We do expect that to be a little underspent, which could actually help feed back into a little bit more of a fund balance. This is a breakdown of the mandated funding, what we're calling it. I know that the language around that's potentially changing, but as of right now, that's how it's used. Again, those core public health functions are there, Senior Services. We have a detox contract with Recovery Resources for Detoxification Services at 171,000. Mental Health and Substance Use, which is contracts with Aspen Hope Center and Mountain Family Health Centers at 304,000. The Integrated Healthcare with Mountain Family Health Centers is 153,000. And so what you'll see there is the discretionary total that was available for the CGRC to work with, with all of the grant requests, was about 1.75 million for 2026.
Stop here. Questions on that? Go ahead.
So does Clinica del Pueblo get any money through any of these at all?
Turn your mic on and red light, please, Francie.
It is on. I'll say it again. Does Clinica del Pueblo get any of these funds?
Yes, they do.
And under what category do they fall?
They are under physical health, so goal two.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Not seeing any currently, thank you.
All right, and so this just shows a little bit of how the funding has progressed over time. On the top, you'll see by year what was requested for each of the Health and Human Services and Community Nonprofit areas in the grant program. And on the bottom, you'll see what was actually granted. Obviously, 2026 is still the recommendations. But you'll see there, so for this year, there were a total of 2.1 million in requests, and the CGRC is recommending to spend 1.95 million, which is about 200,000 over the discretionary we total we had on the previous page at about 1.75 million, which would eat into the fund balance. Any questions about any of the financial aspects of this before we kind of head into the CGRC comments and impressions?
And the recommendation to spend the fund balance is contextual for this year?
Yes, we did get some guidance that, you know, we would be able to spend into the fund balance. And, you know, it is in the best interest of the fund going into, you know, a renewal year that we're not sitting on a fund balance. The funds are, you know, meant to be utilized, so we did want to, we gave the CGRC that guidance that that could be done if they chose to. And looking at the requests that they got, they did opt to recommend spending that balance down a bit.
Thank you. Patty?
So emergency uses, do we usually tap into the fund balance during the year if something out of the ordinary comes up?
That's happened this year. It hasn't been common practice since I've been kind of overseeing this. I think Lisa could maybe speak to that if it's happened more often.
It has not happened. Should I pull up the slide of the history of it?
No, I just, I just, yeah, because this has been an uncommon year, as we know. And I think we're concerned that we're going to have, next year's going to be uncommon, and maybe the year after. So any amount of money we have left in the fund balance would kind of be our emergency pool. So just to give everybody a heads-up, I'm concerned that we might need, might need to have more in that fund balance going into these next year, if not the next couple of years. Keep that, keep coverage for what we see as not necessarily mandatory, but essential or critical.
Yeah, and in the previous ballot measure, there had, had been a contingency fund that had been set aside. So that, I think that was around 100,000. That didn't carry over onto, to the 2018.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. All right, so, yep, we did kind of hit on that, that the CGRC is recommending spending down the excess fund balance to meet some of the needs for the organizations that are requesting. Some of the discussion points that the CGRC brought forward was that sometimes we were, and this had happened last year. We, we mentioned this last year, we weren't getting full financial documentation. We'd asked for two years of financial documentation. Some organizations are great about providing that, some organizations are providing partial. And that's some, the CGRC said that it would, it was a little harder for them sometimes to make their determinations without having those full financial statements. The CGRC did note that they had, they obviously support organizations using AI to help increase capacity, but they were noticing that some of the applications might still have the kind of AI tag prompt still in there. So being a little more careful about cut and paste and reading up on that. We did just have a really great training helping organizations get up to speed with AI practices. That was well-attended, over 50 different, 50 folks from over 40 organizations came. So we're trying to help them build that capacity to use AI a little more effectively. The CGRC themselves expressed frustration with the Blackbaud Program, which is where the applications come in. It's where they review and score applications. They just didn't find that platform to be particularly user-friendly. It's not the first time we've heard that. It's not the first time we've heard that. We are talking with our Regional Granters Collaborative about different platforms that are out there and what might be a good fit, but they just did want to bring up that Blackbaud felt to them a little clunky and not particularly easy to review the information. Another thing that came up, the CGRC questioned how large national organizations with huge funding and reserves were using anything that was coming from the Healthy Community Fund locally. We do have a couple organizations that are funded that are large national organizations, and sometimes when those organizations provide their financials, we're seeing maybe their state or national financials and not really what's happening locally, what their costs are to operate here in the region. That was just something that they called out. And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Examples, like who?
I think the one that just jumps to mind, and Lisa could tag in, for example, Planned Parenthood. They are, you know, huge national organization, their budget's in millions and millions. So when we see that, to, when they are asking for 15,000 or whatever it is, the CGRC just said it's kind of hard to see how that lands locally.
I thought it was more of like the Catholic charities don't show their local funding. And there was a new one in there, the Best Buddies International.
Right. Yeah, and that's not, they weren't questioning the value of the services provided. It's just, it's a little unclear when you're looking at big, large, national organizations' financial information. And then lastly, they discussed strengthening collaboration with the Regional Granters Group, tracking impacts, just noting that it would be helpful to continue that work so we can better understand how all of these efforts are making an impact in the region. All right, and so getting towards the grant recommendations. This year, we had five new agency requests that were recommended for funding. Those were High Rocky's Harm Reduction, the Basalt Education Foundation, Best Buddies International Foundation, College Outreach, and Cali's Backyard Foundation. We did have three organizations whose applications were not recommended for funding, that being West Mountain Regional Health Alliance, the Community Assistance Fund, which is a emergency assistance fund operated through Human Services Economic Assistance Department, and Age Wise Colorado. And that, I believe, is, is funded or would be funded through the Senior Services budget since that type of funding's already been pulled out through the ballot language.
Maybe John can help with this. The West Mountain Regional Health Alliance, what is that?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll ask for help here too, but it was, it's a regional collaborative that had originally, Picking County was, I think Nan Sandin at the time was in a leadership role in helping to get that created to, it did start off looking at healthcare access in particular within the region, but its role has expanded more recently. There have been a number of grants where they've been involved in homeless conversations and a number of others that are escaping me right now. I think, you know, we've, we've been involved and in discussions with the authority, but, you know, more, more recently, some of our goals, I think, have moved in different directions.
So, it's not affiliated with our Valley Health Alliance?
No, it's not affiliated with Valley Health Alliance.
And it's not technically a redundancy of our Valley Health Alliance?
No, the two different populations are being served there.
And so, the fact they didn't get funded was because of what it says here, that the financial position, there wasn't like enough vetted information. Okay, just wanted to differentiate that.
I would like to understand this a little bit more because I, like, if I remember correctly during the pandemic, I thought that they were managing several major federal grants related to homelessness, and I thought they owned the sort of point-in-time surveys and, you know, part of the infrastructure for understanding who our full homelessness population is. So, I, their failure seems, you know, risky and that we potentially, you know, should be worried if they're not going to be able to hold and stand up those services or at least understand what the plan is to keep them going.
So, is there a benefit to keeping them in the loop or a deficit to losing them in the loop?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I don't want to contribute.
We were not funded last year either, just so you know.
So, the West Mountain, hi, Lindsay May, Director of Human Services. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us today. So, West Mountain Regional Health Alliance is positioned as a backbone organization right now. And one of the areas, am I on? Is my mic on? Yes. And one of the areas I think that the CGRC continues to struggle with this organization is that they're not a service-delivery organization. And almost every other organization that comes through the Healthy Community Fund is providing a service to the community. Now, what they do, you're right, Kelly, they brought in a number through different coalition buildings. So they have the Valley Alliance to End Homelessness. They're also part of the Mountain Coalition for Food and Nutrition Security. And those are kind of their big two initiatives right now in convening, bringing partners together across the entire region to have discussions about how we implement strategic planning for those kinds of things. So the CGRC sometimes struggles because they're not offering a specific service. What they're doing, though, is bringing partners together and convening the discussions for potential, like, who could come to the table for some of these financial, like, how do we financially back food security in the region? We've come to you before and talked with you a bit about that. We did reach out to West Mountain Regional Health Alliance to ask if they would backbone some of the food security stuff, and they said that they did not have the capacity to do that. They also, because of their financial position, that was really this year, the reason that the CGRC, because they are, they actually came to you, I want to say, maybe even less than a year ago, requesting funding as well because their financial situation was really tricky. It's not, it's not sustainable right now. So that was why they struggled. I don't know if that answers or clarifies their role right now in the community and any sort of recommendations that you all have.
So if they go away, who's organizing the point-and-count surveys? Who's managing the database of homeless?
All the providers are doing that. So all the service providers are the ones that are doing the point-and-time counts. Those are established in all three of the counties. So here locally, we have Recovery Resources, who organizes our entire point-and-time count locally. In Garfield County, my, Health Solutions West is the point of contact for all the homeless services and point-and-time contacts. And they have their street out, they're funded with Street Outreach workers through the Emergency Solutions Grant. So, what Mountain, what West Mountain Regional Health Alliance did was they applied for those grants on behalf of all of those service providers, and then they were divvying out that, that funding for, for the strategic plan, for the Valley Alliance to End Homelessness.
Doesn't that bring value, and then they're not competing amongst each other for the same monies?
So, in theory, that's exactly what it should be doing. I think in practice, that's part of the challenge that, and why Lindsay's hesitating to answer that question.
Thank you. Yeah.
And I think the CGRC's main concern, so the financial position has been for two years, was not particularly stable. And for the prior two years before that, they had provided feedback to the organization that your grant applications are not clear. We don't understand what the services. And after a couple of years of providing that feedback and not seeing better applications, they actually, one year they decreased the funding, and then the next year they decided, last year they decided not to fund. Also add that none of the organizations that did not, were, are not recommended, submitted an appeal for that. Everyone had the opportunity to appeal. We didn't receive any appeals this year.
Okay. Happy to move forward. I still have concerns about the failure of this organization.
Part of, so, just to address the concern, I too, share those same concerns with you, and it's one of the reasons we've, in the Regional Granters Collaborative, we've been working really closely with the Aspen Community Foundation around what their role is to help to convene partners to look for funding opportunities. It is a role that they're willing to step into, a more financial or a fiscally convener role. They just don't want to do the programmatic end. And so, in this, right now, we're still sort of exploring and trying to figure out what the best, if not, if not here, then where, and how do we continue to have these, these regional discussions with all the right partners in the room for these very big issues like homelessness and food security.
So, Aspen Community Foundation is going to apply for HUD grants and Prop 123 homelessness initiative fundings?
They could, they could be the fiscal, yep.
It just seems real far from their wheelhouse.
Yep, it would, and it's very specific just to being the fiscal agent for those things versus any sort of programmatic. What they're saying is we would need a strategic plan, you'd have to, the region has to give us a strategic plan. So, West Mountain Regional Health Alliance could continue on the programmatic side of working with all of the partners to develop the strategic plan while we have an organization that's able to take on some of the fiscal accountability. Because I think that's really what's illustrated in their financials, is that it's not, it doesn't look great.
Okay, we can talk about this more offline, but I have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and while we're not closing, we're going to pull up the spreadsheet in a minute and kind of go goal area by goal area to see if folks have any concerns. We did just want to thank the, you know, the CGRC did want to thank the Commissioners for giving them the opportunity to be on this, on this committee. They found it to be really rewarding. And then we just wanted to thank them for their time they spent doing this and, and, you know, really asking great questions and being really interested in the process and dedicated to their community, so.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
So after their first year of doing this, are any of them coming back for next year? It's a lot of work, and we truly do appreciate it. It's a lot of information and a lot of discussion, and we really couldn't do without them. We've tried in the past, way back, and it's not easy.
Lisa, can you pull up the spreadsheet? And is this, is it helpful for you all for us to pull up the spreadsheet and go goal area by goal area to see if there's any particular questions?
It's probably helpful for the rest, but I'll highlight it and underline it.
It's probably more interesting for the folks who are listening too, to be able to see what we're looking at.
I like to see it.
Yeah, we'll get that up here in a sec.
You don't have your packet from upstairs, Francie?
No.
All right, and so what's, what's helpful here for the discussion? Is it good for me to go through goal area and just read the organizations? Is it helpful to just pull it up there and go through if folks have questions? We can kind of do this, however, would be helpful for you all.
Greg?
We've got a lot to go through. I, I have a couple red flags, you know, or just flags on things. I'm sure Patty probably does, others may as well. And I'm just wondering, were there any things that you flagged that would be one of my questions? Because it all looks pretty familiar. But there are a couple things just with question marks, and I'm just wondering, are there anything to stand out that you want to show us?
I don't think we, as staff, have anything. We, we've obviously got our CGRC comments in here in case there's questions about any particular organization and what the recommendation was. But, you know, at the end of the day, what's currently recommended fits within, you know, obviously, spends down the fund balance a little bit, which, you know, is that, that's kind of up to you all if you'd like to, to take that step or not. But we feel, you know, I think as staff feel pretty comfortable with, that we did have good consensus. There wasn't, within the CGRC, folks were walking away feeling like they were heard so that this is representative of their decisions for these recommendations.
If, if it's time, I could just throw out the ones I want to look at, but you, otherwise you can just go down.
Why don't we wait until we get to them in the section of the?
Yeah, I think if we stick section by section, we can get to each, whoever's got concerns, and we can take notes on that as well. But that'll help us keep a little organized instead of jumping back and forth, so.
Let me ask for some clarification, just about the spreadsheet. So, when I read this spreadsheet, I look at, you know, 25, 24, 23. We did a three-year partnership fund for all of those. So now, we're in a new three-year partnership fund in 2026. So any of these that are in gold, we assume we're approving for three years?
So, the orange highlighted organizations are partnerships. We did not review those applications this year. They are going to be entering their third year of their partnership. Yep, so, their second, sorry. 26 is their second?
Yep.
Oh, right, we did them last year. I should remember that. Busy year. Yeah, so they're ending their second year. And so the ones that we are looking at are, like, for example, Casa of the Ninth is, is, it was white, not highlighted. So those are the ones that we are looking at. And so Column E has the request amount, and then the Column D has the recommendation from the CGRC. Columns I, J, and K are just showing what those organizations received in those years, prior years.
We're not revisiting any of the gold ones until 2028?
Correct. Now, if the CGRC or the Commissioner, if, if the BOCC had concerns about performance, I believe that's something that can be brought up. I've never been through that process.
And we have, we get an annual report from them and a mid-year report from them, and we do site visits, so we keep up with them if they're on a partnership. And the partnerships are three-year rolling, so we don't do a new three-year partnership every year. They're, if they want a three-year partnership, they had applied in 2025, for 2025 through 2027. Because we used to do, have just willy-nilly ones everywhere, and it became a nightmare.
Yeah, you brought them onto the one team, willy-nilly. That makes sense. I guess I'm just wondering, you know, if.
So these were all reviewed last year.
Right. If we felt like we needed to siphon, you know, 5% off the top of every one of them in order to have a more robust emergency fund, we would be breaking contract?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Would, would it require, I'm looking at John, maybe you know better. Could that happen, and if so, would that just require new contracts, or is that not something that can happen? I really don't have that answer.
You mean if we felt we needed to give them additional funding during their partnership years?
I think Kelly was saying takeaway, so.
It was a hypothetical question.
I think it's written into the contract. I think it's written into the contract. There's a portion saying, as long as the funding is stable.
So, we cannot make a multi-year commitment beyond year over year because of tabers. So the contract would have to have a clause, subject to appropriations. So this board retains the ability to change the appropriations, and so it's not a contract in terms of quid pro quo. What it was designed to do is to try and give some assurance to our partners about the continuity. So I think that's where that would fall, and I want a chance to answer Greg's question because I have one concern I don't think these guys can share, so.
Please, go ahead.
Oh, I can go ahead. Okay, yeah. You know, the, the, one flag is a Community Assistance Fund, and, okay, and if you already caught that, that's great. Greg, since you're asking, that's one particularly in these times that I, I think I would be a little bit concerned about as we may have more emergency assistance needs that come up over the next couple of years. So, I, I think it'd be worth the board just having a conversation about that when the time is right. In economic, and we used to have a Community Assistance Fund. This is the first year it has not been appropriated, and I believe that was really kind of tied to economic assistance.
They haven't been in for three years. They haven't applied for three years.
So what happened with, it was called the Emergency Assistance Fund historically. And the, the name was changed to bound kind of optics, anyway. And what had happened is during COVID, the first money we spent during that first three months of, wow, we're getting rent assistance out, was that fund. wow, we're getting rent assistance out, was that fund. So that went down to zero, and then the county appropriated, it was about $3 million with our partners, to, to keep doing those efforts. And then as things got settled out in the following year, that actually got back, backfilled. And there was another funding amount that came in. So for a while, the fund was over, overfunded. And so for two years, economic assistance didn't apply for assistance while they, or for funding while they spent that down. This year, the demand on the program had increased. And so what was left got spent down fairly quickly. There was a supplemental that came to you all. I think they received another $25,000 to finish out the year. And so, so yes, they haven't, there hasn't been an application for this program for a couple of years as that reserve, you would call it, was spent down.
And so, yeah.
Gosh darn it. All right, no, I said it as soon as I turned the light on. I just wanted to flag that for you. I, I think that the history is, is accurate. But the real question is, do we want some powder dry in that fund going forward?
Thank you, thanks for that.
And the CGRC's, I mean, since we're there, it's really the second one on the list we would be talking about. The CGRC's observations were not around the utility of the program and whether it's helpful or not. The question was around ballot language, says that these need to be 501(c)(3) nonprofits. This is not one of those, was the CGRC's contention. And felt that it just didn't belong in the Healthy Community Fund based on that observation.
Why, yeah, I have a question. Do you want to go first?
Just on this topic, it's just that, so it's like, it's the CAF is, is a contingency fund for the Healthy Community Fund. Couldn't the Healthy Community Fund just maintain a balance of a percent, 16%, for instance, or 20% of operating as a contingency fund that is locked up until we need it?
The, the answer to that is yes. However, the advantage of appropriating is it makes us more agile. If you keep it in fund balance, we've got to come back through a budget supplemental process before we can respond to an emergency. So for example, if, for example, SNAP. One of the reasons we're able to respond so quickly is we had appropriated emergency funds in the manager's office that we actually committed to use for SNAP and didn't have to come back into a budget supplemental process. And it just feels like these things are coming at us and changing, right? On a daily basis. And so that, that's the reason I think it's worth a conversation.
So it has to be in this form?
It makes it easier and quicker for us to respond to changing circumstances if it's appropriated.
Why isn't it just built into the mandated services as a fund balance?
We just didn't think about it when we were, I think, putting the ballot language together. And it's also, it, it's difficult to describe, I guess, what that's for. But it's just something that when we did the resolutions and the, and such. I think that's an option, Kelly, for you all. This board appropriates the funds. And so this board has the opportunity to, to do those sorts of things and say, hey, off the top, we want to keep a pot of money for these circumstances, just like we did with the general fund and the manager's budget. That's not how these recommendations are built right now. And that's the concern I wanted to raise with you.
Thank you, thanks for that.
So I think we could. I think we could at the end of the day.
Right, but then ultimately, we'd have to cut 100 grand out of these grant recommendations to zero out our budget.
Or some amount.
Or more.
Right, right.
Or potentially spend down the fund balance.
Or spend down the fund balance.
I, I would add, the other thing that the CGRC discussed was the amount of the request. It was significantly higher than historically. Historically, the awarded amounts had been between 25 and 45,000, kind of on average, depending on, 40.
For this specific request?
For this program, yeah.
And you guys made the request.
At one point, I was making the request, yes.
I just want to be clear, like, when we say they.
The last person to submit that grant application was me.
We are community assistance.
And I was successful.
Is that true for this year?
This year, our Economic Assistance Manager, Norma Avila, completed the, the application.
That's what she thinks we need to have some powder dry for.
It, it makes sense for it to live in the Economic Assistance Department where it's historically been.
Okay. And I think, sorry, the one thing we don't have in, in front of us is what is the, or maybe we do and it's buried in here and I don't know where it is, the total fund balance remaining?
If we were to go with the recommendations, we would have around 115,000 left that could be spent. There's a Tabor holdback of, I think it's 170,000, Connie? Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. And, sorry, I lost my train of thought. We do expect to have some savings around the administrative costs too. We don't know what that looks like yet, though.
Okay. So there's that. Okay. Food for thought, we'll circle back before the end of the hour. How does that make sense?
Thanks for indulging me in that.
Before the end of the hour?
Before the end of the hour.
Okay, just want to make sure we do, yeah. I was wondering, when do we have to do this? Like, today?
Well, by, before December, whatever date we adopt the budget. But, yes, things kind of...
Just so you know, we've already subtracted out the Tabor reserve in calculating how much is left over. So the 115,000 sum would not be the total fund balance. We already subtracted out the Tabor reserve and have only given you the numbers of what's really available that could be potentially spent.
Yeah.
Good to know. Tabor reserve is still there.
So she's only giving us 115,000, unless we reduce some other grants, which might be possible.
Okay. Very helpful, thank you. Let's go back to the top of the page and see if there's any further item, any further recommendations to discuss.
That would be a question I have. So if we were to deduct from a further grant that, say, was getting X amount of dollars and we said, no, we want that money to go back, we can do that, right?
Absolutely, yeah. These are recommendations from the Citizen Grant Review Committee.
We could take money from somebody that we thought maybe could be better used somewhere else and transferred back to the, to the fund balance to be used, say, to supplement this.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so from the Community Assistance Fund, the next one that is up for discussion this year is Harvest for Hunger. They requested 80,000 and the CGRC recommended funding them at that level.
Yeah, question on that?
Please, Greg.
I want to flag that. I, I want to just get a little brief history and how much, can we do a supplemental for them already? Is this reflecting a previous ask or is this reflecting a, this is in 2026, okay? I just wanted to flag it because it looks like it's grown pretty dramatically. And there are probably good reasons for that. I, I was looking, I was expecting to see lift up in there also, and they're not even there.
They didn't apply.
So they didn't even apply for this, this year, okay? And I have, I, I just had concerns, like, is, is Harvest for Hunger sharing any information on how many people they're serving or? I think I remember a number, but I couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah, they provide that information to Human Services monthly through their lease with us in the, in the building. And I haven't looked, most recently, since all the SNAP stuff has happened. I don't think Gray's been able to get us those numbers. But pre the SNAP issues, they were seeing on average, it was 60 people a day and then 150 on Tuesdays, which is when they bring in the fresh produce. And folks have kind of figured out that schedule there. And so, yeah, so 60 a day and 150 on Tuesdays.
30-day month or 20-day month or?
Uh, they are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, unless the office is closed, so. You know, between 20 and 23 days a month, I guess that would probably work out too.
Got it, okay. And I know they're, it seems like they also put in security or something. Is this helping pay for security or supervision? There was a question.
We have human, we have Human Services security contracted, same as the other county security. And so they are able to monitor the cameras around the building. They do that for all of the tenants in the building. Harvest for Hunger does not have their own security.
Okay, got it. I just knew they had a somewhat of a change in their posture, one of the last correspondences. And it sounded like it was going to become more expensive. And I was just wondering if this increased cost is reflecting that.
So the increase, and I, it was in the, in the actual application. But the reason you saw last year the 15,000 and now it's jumping is because they opened the Aspen Pantry in this last year. And that, those amounts were for the snowmass and the response shelter pantries that they had. And, and, and Gray is a, Gray War is a relatively new executive director and was not anticipating just how much growth he was going to see at the Aspen Pantry this year. Once he got his pulse on that, he, he's been sharing lots of data with us around how many people are coming through the door. And this, just in the federal government shutdown, they've seen a 30% increase, which is 15% more than Lift Up is seeing down Valley. So whether it's word of mouth, it's not clear what that is. But we are seeing a very big increase as well, just in response to that. This was sort of what he said, and this is not all of his budget. His budget is bigger than $80,000 to run the Aspen Pantry. He's also getting, he has a lot of, I believe, donor and the giving circles, like they're the...
Giving network.
The giving network, yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah. He's getting funding from all over. He's doing a great job and it looks sustainable. But the true cost of what it's going to be to, to keep those pantry doors open, yeah.
My last question, since you're here, did Lift Up not apply because they didn't feel like it was worth it? Or?
We don't ask those questions.
I know they're still serving 1,000 people a week in the valley. So it's not like they've gone away or folded up and, and left town. But they're, it's funny that they're not a presence here and I just want to have to ask why.
Well, it's, I think what's also interesting is that the 80,000 is the request that Harvest for Hunger, and in past years with Lift Up, it's been between 50 and 60,000 to run the pantry here in Aspen. So if you kind of, if you look at those two things, and they're not apples to apples, because they're very different services and different service delivery models, but... Right, but the cost is a little more for Harvest for Hunger, but also they're open five days a week. And they're stocking the shelves every day, so it makes sense.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not out of line, okay.
And I think with the supplemental Lift Up, I, I don't want to speak out of term, but I believe when they came forward with the supplemental, they felt like that was enough support for them.
Got it, okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if we saw them come back into the fund next year.
Right. Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, are there questions about, about those listed on the screen?
One more. I just, I just got from Connie some numbers. To put into context, this year, how many off-cycle grant requests we've funded has been around $180,000. So when you're looking at that fund balance of 115, in just this year alone, we've already taken 180 out of the fund balance to support some of these additional services. And back to last week with kind of what's the problem statement is that we're just seeing more requests coming from these really important core service providers.
Got it.
I have a question on this page.
Sorry, Francie, go ahead.
So the Mountain Valley about mental services. It sounds, the description of what they do sounds like what you do and what other organizations do. Is it distinctly different? How is that?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to emphasize how singular of an organization they are around assisting folks with developmental disabilities. They do waiver programs that, you know, manage Medicaid waivers for all three counties. They provide vocational training and, and even job opportunities through what they do. I, I can't think of another organization that's similar. Oh, one of our CGRC members can speak very clearly to what...
You'll have to come up, please.
Hi, I'm Laura Masters and I'm the Development Director of Mountain Valley of Mental Services. So I can answer any of your questions. I'm also on the committee. So we've been around for about 50 years, helping people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in four counties, actually. Lake, which is Leadville, Pittkin, Eagle, and Garfield. So we start in Glenwood and then you go up to Aspen and then you go over the pass and then you go to Eagle. So it's this big fat circle. And we help, we help families with children zero to three with developmental and delayed issues get into preschool. And then we help adults 18 to end of life with a number of different programs, adult services programs, which include residential. We own 10 homes, 10 group homes. And work, I can't remember the word for it. Work, we, you know, we work with 50 different businesses and we have 45 clients who work there. And some work two or three jobs. And then, so we're out in the community that way. And then we have an enrichment program, which is clients who, you know, they wake up in their homes. Not only do we have group homes, we also, participants, adult participants live with their families. They live in host homes, they live in apartments, they live in a bunch of different places. They get up every day, decide what they're going to do that day. It's all client choice, client-based decisions. And they either come to the day program, we have three-day programs. One in Glenwood Springs, one in Minterne, which is in Eagle, and one in Silt. And they either go to the day program and, you know, do something fun that day, like go horseback riding at Windwalkers or go do a special Olympics event.
I just want to jump in here. Does that clarify, Francie? I just want to move us along a little.
I could talk for a long time.
Yeah, and we don't, the other nonprofits don't get a chance to do that, so I also want to be fair.
So we specifically, yeah, we do a lot of different things that other nonprofits don't direct, don't...
Okay, great. That's what I want to know. Thank you, Mark.
If you want to know more, you know.
Thank you, Mark.
I know where to find you. You know where to find you. The whole point is that they get to decide what they're going to do every day. Go to work, go do something fun. And we try to encourage smiles and, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Inclusion, okay.
And then just going back to Greg's question on Lift Up, I, I think another possibility, Greg, there is that they would be looking at the possibility of a future RFP process that would probably be more, more substantive than what we're talking about in the grant program.
Got it. All right, thank you.
If we go to the RFP part.
All right, other questions on this page?
Yep, so what we're seeing here, the last three in goal area, one that were up for an annual award was Stepping Stones, Valley Settlement, and Youth Zone. And those were all recommended to be funded at their full request. All right, so goal area two, physical health. In this one, we have Community Health Services, La Clinica de la Puebla, and Planned Parenthood. All were recommended to be funded at their full request.
Do we know if Community Health Services has, is whole? I know we did a recent off-grant cycle. Appropriation and, you know, I, I guess I see them as more of our core services. So I'm not sure if, between the funding for our core services and then this, would I consider a supplemental request? Are they whole?
What they let us know was that the requests that they made to you all, they would make their gap in funding whole from their reserves as well as what you provided them in their supplemental. So we haven't heard of any additional loss of funding that they've brought to our attention or indicated that they would need to come back for another request. So I guess we have to assume that they're...
These were submitted like over the summer before they lost funding?
Right.
So I guess I would just say, this is an area where, you know, if additional funded were needed, I would want to know that from them. Patty?
Yeah, especially immunization programs. I know there's some other opportunities within the state that may be helping to supplement immunization programs. But if, if in, if in case, if in doubt, yeah, that's something I think that we might, we would consider in the future, this over this next year or two. That's another reason to keep money in that reserve fund.
And the community health immunizations is also supported by a contract through our Public Health Fund.
Right, right.
So part of the money that Public Health gets from the Healthy Community Fund goes to community health then for the immunizations contract. And they have had increases this year that we did supplemental request.
Right, right. But we don't know where, that, that fund to community health will be hit or not hit, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie.
Thanks, Connie.
Are there other questions on this?
All right, so looking at goal area three, what we've got on the page here that we're looking at for annual... All right, so looking at goal area three, what we've got on the page here that we're looking at for annual grants is Away Out Headquarters, The Meeting Place, oh, sorry, Hierarchy's Harm Reduction. They're one of our new organizations, The Meeting Place, and Smiling Goat Ranch. And looking at this, almost all of them were rec, sorry, can we go back up, Lisa?
Oh, sorry, this is like...
Delay in movement, yeah. Almost all of them were recommended at funding for their full amount. Headquarters, the CGRC is recommending to fund at twenty thousand, even though their ask was thirty thousand. And it says in the comments here, they suggest providing more emphasis on sustainability and focused programming.
And what sort, what services does Hierarchy's Harm Reduction provide that others that we're working with don't?
Hierarchy's Harm Reduction provides access and information around primarily opioid overdose. They provide Narcan at various, they basically have their vehicles, they'll come to. They're at Human Services on Tuesdays or Thursdays?
It says on here.
Okay, yeah, so they're at Human Services on Thursdays, but they are in Pittkin, Eagle, and Garfield County. Basically, they're trying to reduce overdoses and then provide people with, and drug testing kits so that folks can test if they are going to take substances, make sure that they aren't containing fentanyl and other dangerous adulterants in that.
Is there like needle exchange or anything like that?
Do they do needle exchange? Yes, okay, yes.
Is that Maggie Summa's organization?
Yeah, Maggie's, Selden.
Selden, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
No judgment.
Yeah, I taught her in seventh, eighth grade.
Okay, thank you.
It must make you feel good.
Yeah, it's great, she's, she's...
Go to the CNPs?
All right, and let's see at the, where do we go? Okay, is this the, sorry. Wait, we had a few more in that, didn't we?
Yeah, goal three, four.
Back up to three. Okay, so we had Meeting Place, okay, sorry, then Smiling Goat Ranch and Windwalkers. And those were all, Meeting Place, Smiling Goat Ranch, and Windwalkers are all recommended for their full request.
I know Windwalkers has reduced their request over time.
Yeah, you don't see that too often.
They have a new executive director. Sometimes that happens for, I don't know why.
It's fine.
All right, okay, any last thoughts on our HHS organizations? We can kind of, I know we've flagged a few. I think we can, once we go through the community nonprofits, maybe circle back on that. But just, if everyone's all right moving to the community nonprofits?
Yep.
Please.
All right, so goal area five, our environmental health, cultural, recreational, educational treasures. What we're looking at here for annual grants is Aspen Public Radio and the Basalt Education Foundation. Those were, Aspen Public Radio's request was for forty thousand, the recommendation is for thirty-five thousand. And the Basalt Education Foundation was asking for ten and was recommended for ten. Okay, we're, stop, let's see, okay. So we just pulled up three more. We've got Best Buddies International, which was new. They requested ninety-five hundred, their recommendation is five thousand. Cali's Backyard is new and was requesting five and is recommended for five. And then KDNK was requesting thirty-five and is recommended for thirty-five.
Is...
Go ahead.
Is Cali's, Cali's has been around quite a long time, but is this the first time they've submitted?
No, they submitted last year, have they?
They submitted before and they were not granted the funding, but they had a better application this year, so...
Great, all right. Yeah, they, I think it sounded like they took the feedback from last year's denial and, and came back with a clear application.
I think she sought help in creating a better application, too. She went to the resources that we offer for that.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to see.
And KDNK, sorry, is thirty-five also.
Yep, yeah, the discussion around that was with Aspen Public Radio and KDNK. And the CGRC kind of came to the idea of like, is there similar, similar services? And so they funded, were recommending to fund them both at the same level.
If I could just comment on that, I, I think we all realize that the, the funding loss for the public radio has been huge. And so cutting them back from the request makes me, I kind of wish we could raise it up rather than cut it back, but...
It is a fifteen thousand dollar increase. They were requesting twenty thousand more than the previous year.
Right.
But yes, there, that was in, definitely part of the discussion was, were those cuts that are happening from the public radio budgets.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we want to keep moving, let's see, if we could just put Challenge Aspen at the top, maybe.
Okay, there we go.
All right, so we've got College Outreach, which is new, requesting three thousand, recommended for three thousand. Kids Connect requesting ten, recommended for ten. Focused Kids requesting fifteen, recommended for fifteen. And Literacy Outreach requesting ten, recommended for ten. And I believe besides the College Outreach, which is new, these organizations were requesting the same amount as they had the year prior and were funded at the year prior.
Can I ask, how, how?
Go ahead.
How many are, you know, there's always a new nonprofit popping up I'd never heard of before. And I just wonder, how long have most of them been around before they actually come in?
This one, so being the Colorado Western Slope College Fair, I don't know.
This was, this was, this was something else before, and they've just regrouped as College Outreach. They've been doing this, they're the ones that have the high school.
Sure.
Like College Fair, basically, for the Western Slope.
Same group, different name, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, but it's different people now.
All right.
I, I am curious, one of the things I'm starting to think about are these are based on the conversation we had last week. And how that would overlay, you know, these conversations, I guess. You know, some of that conversation was really reducing...
Really what?
Reducing the degree to which we would fund these community nonprofits. And so I don't really have a specific question, except to sort of think, like, how does that affect English in Action? You know, and how, I mean, how does that affect partnerships overall? Because we're going to go in, they're not going to ti, the timing won't be right, it won't be lined up. Where we'll, may now have new ballot language that doesn't line up with the third year of their partnership. And, and then what does, what does that look like for...
Yeah, we might have to roll that...
Yeah.
Old language over for the partners, we'll have to figure that out when we go.
Right, you know. I'll just put, put that out there, maybe we'll revisit at the end and see, sort of walk through some examples on, on what these recommendations might look like under that lens next year.
Can I tag onto that? In that conversation, I, I'd like to just get a sense of, you know, this is, represents an incredible committed volunteer service workforce. There's a brain trust and a workforce that's just unlike any other community I've ever seen. And, and I want to make sure we keep that in mind as we're, as we're looking at this. Because we all have our favorites or we all have our concerns, but the fact is, this represents an amazing, you know, part of our, you know, something we can all be proud of in our community for the... So perhaps the, the actual cost is greater to all the volunteers than it is to us, but we're able to support them and make it happen.
Kelly, but they're not all volunteers.
They're not all volunteers, right, some people are getting paid, it's true. People get salaries for running things.
And in some cases, they get large salaries, which we've also looked at in the past, so where's the fairness there?
Right, good point.
It's a good point, though, Greg, thank you for that, it is pretty impressive.
All right, do any of these raise questions? Focused Kids?
Just, only, only the question is, like, you've got a literacy program and then a raising a reader program, and I guess they all have their own niches, but is the redundancy one of the concerns of the board?
Yes, the CGRC has talked about that. And, I mean, in the years I've been in the room, it typically comes out to see that they're just serving different populations. Some are incorporated into the schools, some are after-school programs. It's, they all seem to be very different, even though they are literacy-focused, yeah.
Yeah, you kind of just wonder if some of them could merge and become stronger and more efficient. I guess we always ask that.
It'd depend on you to do that, Greg.
Yeah, exactly, if I'm here.
All right, so looking at what we've got here, we've got Focused Kids requesting fifteen, recommended for fifteen. Literacy Out, wait, did we just do those? Sorry, can we go to Raising a Reader at the top?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so Raising a Reader, recommended for fifteen, asking fifteen. Roaring Fork Leadership was requesting fifteen thousand, is recommended for five thousand. Roaring Fork Schools Foundation was requesting ten, recommended for ten. Savings Collaborative requesting thirty, recommended for thirty, and Summit Fifty-four requesting fifty, recommended for thirty-five.
Summit, come here, Kelly?
Yeah.
Summit Fifty-four has no grant request summary.
Wow, that must have come off another one. They've been in for, they do a summer enrichment program for students? Let me see. I'd go back to look at my other one, but this is going to...
Yeah, it's pretty intensive at the elementary school level.
In the Aspen School District or valley-wide?
It's mainly mid-valley.
Yeah, I don't know if it's Aspen, but they do it at Basalt.
And I would add that the 2024 grant funding for zero wasn't because they were recommended for zero, they didn't apply that year. Any questions or ones that would be flagged in this group? All right, if we could put Mountain, West Mountain at the top. All right, so finishing out goal area five, we've got West Mountain Regional Health Alliance, which we already called out earlier, that was not being recommended for funding. And then Youth Entity requesting fifteen thousand and recommended for fifteen thousand. Are we good to roll to goal area six? All right. All right, goal area six, can we just, yeah, put Aces at the top. We've got Aces requesting ten, recommended for ten. Aspen Journalism requesting thirty, recommended for thirty. Aspen Valley Land Trust at fifteen, recommended for fifteen. Colorado Fourteeners Initiative at five, recommended for five. Colorado Wild Public Lands at ten, recommended for ten. Farm Collaborative was requesting a hundred thousand, the CGRC recommended seventy-five thousand.
Can we flag that one and have a chat about it? Farm Collaborative?
Go ahead.
Well, I just noticed the, the numbers have gone up dramatically. It's a huge request, double what they had previously, at least. And they got three-quarters of that, so it's still a fifty percent increase, and I'm...
It's a hundred percent increase from twenty-three.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I'm, just love to have a little bit more understanding, because that's a huge hit. That's, that's larger by, by a factor of ten than many of the other organizations. And I'm just wondering, in particular, why?
Their executive director will always ask for a high amount.
And he usually gets it.
It seems to work for them.
And, and a comment from the CGRC was that they're recommending this high amount as a one-time support and is looking forward to seeing the impact of the funding.
Looking for what?
They were doing it as a one-time high amount, like, and we would like to see the impact of the funding.
I have a problem, I think.
Yeah, well...
I'll stop, I'll let other people talk.
Let Francie go.
Great.
Francie, go ahead. I really have a hard time with this. It's, they're asking for ten times as much as we give to Aces. And Aces, we know, is extremely successful and has a huge outreach. And the Farm Collaborative is supposedly teaching things about agriculture, but the agriculture that's happening there is a bad example of agriculture. It's how to be a bad gardener. It looks terrible. It could be the most beautiful entrance to Aspen gardens, and it's just awful-looking, it's embarrassing. And I just cannot support this, it's really hard for me. It's so much more than other organizations have asked for or received. Ed and Vardy is really great at raising money, period.
Thank you, Francie. I have a proposal, I'll go to Patty.
Well, I am in agreement, and it's hard for me, since I was Southern Regional founding board when it was Aspen Tree way, 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 way back, how they have changed their basic fundamental philosophy. So I have a question that's more about the uses for the farm park, the, you know, diverse programs, day camp. We don't, do we use healthy community funds to support day camps or childcare?
Camps, not childcare.
Well, this, this is, and a learning facility, we don't fund capital.
Correct.
So we're, they're a learning facility, we're going to be funding with part of this money. I know they're still trying to raise money for over eight million dollars, it's a beautiful building out there. But I, I have concerns about the loss of agriculture on an agricultural community parcel. So if anything, I want to hear Kelly's proposal. I might be convinced to give them some smaller amount, put the rest towards maybe the Community Assistance Fund, where we really know we have a need and where we know that money will actually go to filling that need. And I feel bad in not being able to support the Farm Collaborative.
I'd like to just add one thing to what I said, if you don't mind, then I'd love to hear your proposal.
Yes.
I believe that these camps charge admissions, and that a lot of the kids who come to these camps have no trouble paying the tuition to go to these camps. So that's another reason why I'm wondering why in the world we'd give them this much money, sorry.
They do charge tuition, it's not cheap, I can attest. I, I would like to propose what Patty laid the groundwork for, that we reduce this to twenty-five thousand and move fifty to the Community Assistance Fund. I don't, I think we've had this conversation since 2023 and can match the amount that we gave in that year and hope for improvement moving forward. Is what I would propose.
I, I will also say Jeffrey also flagged concerns about this request to me. He didn't, he didn't offer a proposal on numbers, but...
I, I want to go one step further, I like where you're, where you're headed. I don't know if we can actually do this, could we designate that twenty-five thousand to buying down tuition fees or offering scholarships to their day camp?
I don't think we can, because of the, it's general operating, we don't direct anyone on how they can spend...
And they do offer tuition as assistance, yeah.
Okay, I was hoping for a little more.
Just as a side, Maura did offer, if you did want to hear what the CGRC's discussions were around Farm Collaborative, she's willing to come kind of provide some insight, up to you, I'd like to.
You too, I'm curious.
I had to remember. The Farm Collaborative, they, they provide all these camps and these summer camps, they also provide employment and housing.
What do the employees do?
They teach the camps, and they also work in the different areas. And also, it's new, it's a new, it's a new, new building, new programs, and so maybe that's why the gardens don't look that hardy yet. It is a lot of money, and there was a lot of conversation about it. And I think at the end of the day, it was, you know, well, let's just see what happens this year, and they have to come back and improve that, you know.
That's not...
That's actually worthy, well, that was what the committee thought of, so...
Thank you, I appreciate that more.
That being said...
Thank you, Maura.
The employment and the housing, we know we approved Land Use Code Amendment to allow them to, to housing for producers, not for teachers onsite. So I don't know where they're supplying housing, and we don't fund housing, but operationally, we, I mean, we do, I mean, not housing for employees necessarily directly. And, yeah, I think this is a critical year to keep those funds in the emergency, in our Community Assistance Fund, rather than seeing how they're going to pan out over the year with giving this much money to an organization that doesn't provide food products for, you know, distribution throughout our needy and our hungry.
Don't they feed the seniors, don't they, with Lift Up?
Don't believe Lift Up works with the Farm Collaborative, not to my knowledge. Lift Up, I don't think they do. They, so Lift Up runs a farm-to-food pantry program where they do pre-purchase arrangements with farmers throughout the region.
They do CSAs, that, that are, some of them are, there's a senior CSA, and there's one offered through Seedpeace, High Mountain Seeds, where they do, and it's, it's a, it's different programs.
Right, yeah, I don't think Lift Up contracts with Farm Collaborative. Right, yeah, I don't think Liftup contracts with Farm Collaborative.
They don't produce anything off of, of the Farm Collaborative, or much of anything anymore. I have chickens. I've put a proposal on the table, I agree with Kelly's proposal for this, and putting the fifty thousand towards the Community Assistance Fund.
All right, I think you have majority direction on that.
Okay, so we can...
She said okay.
Okay, I'll go along with it, sure.
I still think twenty-five thousand's a lot, compared to a lot of the other organizations.
They still need to come back and demonstrate that they're, what they're, you know, the improvements that we have been discussed here, it would be great to see that next year.
Okay, so, so we're clear, we're asking to reduce the recommendation for Farm Collaborative to twenty-five thousand, and go back to the Health and Human Services, and put that fifty on the Community Assistance Fund?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Might still add more to that Community Assistance Program, we're not done with that one yet. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks.
We'll just make sure we...
And I'll just say, I think on the board's behalf, I recognize this may cause consternation that comes towards your staff, and feel free to direct inquiries towards us.
We'll field those.
Can you go back to HHS and just update the Community Assistance Fund, so we don't lose track of our numbers?
What the hell is this, oh, sorry.
Don't, don't ask us!
You're asking us?
It's the computer, it does its own thing, okay.
You talk to it, don't you?
I find swearing at things at least makes me feel better.
I mean, we've asked him to step it up every year, so, to come back and ask for that much money is.
So what are we putting in here?
Uh, Community Assistance Fund would be at fifty. All right, so back to CNP and Goal Six. All right, let's see what we've got here, so we've got Roaring Fork Safe Passages requested twenty, they're recommended for ten, Roaring Fork Wildfire Collaborative requesting fifteen, recommended for fifteen, Spring Gold Trail System requesting six, recommended for six, and then Wilderness Workshop requesting twenty, and recommended for twenty.
And Roaring Fork Conservancy, those are just, yeah, perennials.
Those are partnerships, yeah.
Got it.
Reactions, questions, Patty?
Yeah, I cannot help but bring up the ten thousand for Roaring Fork Safe Passages. Last year, we gave them ten, was it for completion of their mitigation plan? I don't know what their request was for last year.
It was for a study.
So, we're, on the prioritized study, well, we're, they're looking at us for another, through some funding mechanism with the county, I think it's three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
That was the first.
To do a feasibility study?
That's been reduced.
We rejected them.
It has been reduced, yeah.
Well, we haven't seen it come back reduced yet, have we? I, I just am concerned about this. I, it's not that I don't think this is an important issue, I just think that I would rather use our time and energy helping this organization, go to the state for funding, which I think would be appropriate with CDOT, and I think that I would convince my board into writing letters of support, seeking opportunities through the transportation priority regions, funding regions, the TPR, to try and get them in that loop, because at the end of the day, they're going to have to have extreme amounts of funding to actually build or do anything, be it improvements of underpasses, or fencing, or overpasses, so I'd hate to spend all of, this is becoming a significant amount of dollars, to study, and to do feasibility studies and mitigation planning, when we, I'd rather really be focusing our efforts on helping them get the money to do projects, and I don't see that happening, and this year especially, that's another ten thousand I would put to the Community Assistance Fund. And then I would use our energies to help support them, and avenues I think would be more appropriate for funding.
I, I do have a question about that, you have your first, Craig.
If you want to follow up on that, go ahead.
A little bit, I'm just wondering, because they, they're asking for money through other mechanisms, John, how, if we give them money through this, and then they come to Healthy Community Fund, that sort of demeans Healthy Community Fund's viability for helping organizations if we're already helping them? It seems to me.
I think your concern is, gosh, that there's a request through Open Space and Trails, there's a request here, and that certainly funds coming out of Healthy Community Fund could be used for other, other entities. There still needs to be a conversation about open space and trails.
Right, whether they can do this.
You know, about whether, or even how, how much I, I think is going to end up being that, that conversation, based on our conversations with the attorney's office, but the board does need to be tracking support across the, the various buckets, so you know how much you're giving overall.
And we do give from multiple sources to multiple organizations on this page.
That's true.
Greg.
Right, I would, I would just want to, I'd stand up for keeping it in there for now, and I, I understand Patty's point, and I think all of the above is being done, as I understand it, I'm not as close to, to have immediate answers for specifics with the money, but I do know it's an expensive undertaking. I also know they've raised an incredible amount of promises from philanthropy and funding who are kind of looking at us to see if we're serious about doing anything about what is really a, a public problem that people recognize, you know, we have carnage on the highways, not only are the animals dying, but people's cars are being trashed, and sometimes the people are too, and it's, there's a, I think it's a need, and I think we're going to see more popular outreach to us saying, please do something about this, and I do think we need to reach out to the state, but I think we also have it on us as well, through Open Space, to fund it, in, in, to some extent, or at least to lend our support, so they know they can go out and, in good faith, ask their donors to step in and help with matching funds. So I, it's not going to go away, if they didn't exist, I think we'd still have a moral obligation to do something about it. I could go on and on, I just think it's medieval, the way we, you know, we run into animals on the highway and let them, leave them there to rot, and then we wait for somebody else to come and clean it up. The insurance cost is high, the human cost is high, and the wildlife cost is extremely high, so while we're concerned about how they're doing it, I think they are, in good faith, trying to move forward on an important, an important public need, which has been kind of ignored up until recently, but the problem's gotten a lot worse, just in the last weekend, I don't know if you noticed the, the amount of dead animals on the highway just in the last several days, is, is this time of year, they're always on the move, so, I'd like to keep it in.
Just going to flag, we have about five minutes.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. That's my argument to keep it in.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, again, I have not heard about them going to CDOT, I would like to see that, I, I don't...
They have, yeah, they're talking to CDOT.
Well, I, I would like to see that, and how you know that, and we don't know that, and we have asked them to do that. The other thing is, is this is the first time in my history doing this fund, that I've had people lobbying me to give money to an organization, and I, I personally feel that's offensive, it's really up to us to decide what the priorities are, and, and I know it's hard to see the dead animals along the highway, and I'm glad people have stopped sending me pictures of dead deer, and dead elk, and dead bears on the highway, because it's traumatizing enough, but I don't, I don't need that kind of input. I think that, and they also want time with EOTC, I don't know if they're going to ask for money there also, it's another county helps with funding for EOTC, which is the Elected Officials Transportation Committee, so I'm just not comfortable at this time, given, until I actually see that they're making efforts and strides to go to the appropriate funding agencies to get money to move this forward, and I'm, I'm sorry that people are, I feel like people are trying to make me feel bad because I'm not saving Bambi on the highway, it bothers me, but I would rather see food on people's tables and roofs over people's head for at least this next year or two.
Just a small thing to add, Kelly.
Sorry, I have some comments, yeah, Patty, or Francie, go ahead. No, it's okay.
I would say that there are more dead elk and deer in the back of pickup trucks than there are dead on highway.
Especially this last week.
During hunting season, and I think if CPW were worried about the number of livestock, I mean, wild life, different business, wildlife on the roads, that they would reduce the harvest during hunting season. So I am not against safe passages by any means, but I do think that the impact on the herds is exaggerated, because it's a very small percentage of the size of the herds, I think it's exaggerated, and I'd love to see the harvest reduced, if we have a problem.
What are your thoughts on the monetary contribution to this organization from the Healthy Community Fund this year?
I'm actually a little bit ambivalent, because I do think it needs more study, but I would like to see numbers from CDOT and CPW to, before I fund more, I think. What do you think?
Well, my thought is, you know, I'd like to support them somehow in the county, we have already ruled out helping, supporting them from the Open Space Fund because of the conflicts in...
I thought we were still under negotiation.
We had conflicts in that ballot language on whether we could fund a transportation project, so I'll look to John to see if my, it's always possible, I'm not remembering correctly.
Yeah, I think, and, and I, I think it's important that Rye have an opportunity to be here for this conversation, I think it's going to be a more nuanced interpretation that has some allowance, but not nearly what's being asked for.
So I, you know, I think we fund similar organizations, I think that we're limited in how we can support them, this is not a huge request, I think their work is important, I think the community thinks that their work is important, and, you know, and it, we should fund it, that's at ten grand, is what I think.
Can I just...
But, we may be at a standstill here, so we have to sort of work this out.
Can I have a question? John, you're talking about language for, out of the, the Open Space and Trails, about transportation, so, does the Healthy Community Fund language say we can fund transportation-related issues?
There was language added around environmental, that has, it, it's very broad, and it was, I'm trying to remember what year it was added, it is one, the...
I'm not comfortable, I'll just get to the point, I'm not comfortable with funding something that's also tied to transportation and to CDOT and funding it out of Healthy Community Fund. At a point in time in this world, where again, we need, I know I'm being redundant, we need to put food on people's tables and roof over people's heads.
Thanks, Patty.
So we'll see where, I think it's going to require some more discussion when we have a full board.
Yeah, and we may, we can bring this back.
I'd be okay.
Formally approving it.
I'll be the third to okay it for this year, but I really want to see data from CDOT and CPW before we consider more money.
Okay, so we've got three yeses.
Okay.
Thank you, good conversation, though. It's important, they should hear this as well.
Thank you. All right, other, any others on this environmental page?
All right, that should be it, yeah? All right, so to summarize, what we have right now is we made an adjustment to the recommendation for Farm Collaborative, down from seventy-five to twenty-five, and that fifty thousand that was reduced was put onto the Community Assistance Fund. At this time, with the recommendations as they stand, you're set to spend down around two-hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to bring us down to a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-seven-seven-four. So I guess that's the kind of remaining question, is, is the board comfortable making that spend, and what you'd like to do if there, that wasn't the recommendation?
Okay, other, I will, I will, I will say, the question I raised before, I want us to bring back, when we talk again about Healthy Community Fund in Q1, which I believe we'll be discussing kind of ballot language and things like that, because I do think it will be helpful to take this and figure out some examples of how they will be affected if, as our policy decisions about the fund change and shift, so we can do that then, we don't need to bog down now. Patty?
Yeah, real quick, I would like to see, I know Francie wants to see numbers about safe passages, I would like to see some effort that was made with CDOT, and I'd also like to see an interpretation from the county attorney, if this is considered a proper use of, appropriate use of Healthy Community Funds, as far as voter language.
Okay, thank you. Other, any others that have come up that we need to revisit?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Great.
Huge thanks to the committee.
Perfect.
Thank you so much, thanks to the committee for your work, and we appreciate all the input, thank you.
Awesome, thanks so much.
We'll see this formally in our budget adoption.
Sounds good.
And if I want to see an application, I'll call you.
Okay. Would the, would the board like a brief break? Until three fifteen scheduled.
I'll take a short break, why not? Fill my water can.
All right, we'll be back at three fifteen. All right, we'll be back at 3:15.
What's this?
Can you guys hear us over there, Picken County? Okay, um, we're going to relocate quickly because the camera in our conference room is working, so we'll unjoin and then rejoin the meeting in just a second. And we'll raise our hands up right there. All right, see you in a second.
See you in about two minutes.
There we go.
All right, welcome back, everyone, to the Picken County Board of County Commissioners Work Session on Wednesday, November 12. We are going to discuss our short-term rental program with an annual review and a discussion of an impact study. And I will turn it over to our community development staff to lead us through this discussion today. Nice to see you all.
Nice to see you sta-, um, board. So then introduce yourself and- Jeanette Musio, Administrator for Short-Term Rental Program for Unincorporated Picken County. The purpose of this work session is to kick off the Short-Term Rental Impact Study with EPS, Economic Planning Systems. And staff is going to be, Alex is online, and Nicole and myself will be here for, to answer questions during the discussion. But we asked that you let EPS take it away and, and go through the program, and we decided to do it this way just for lack of time or time constraints. So I'd like to introduce Andrew and Carlin, EPS.
All right. Thank you, Jeanette. Good to see you, members of the VOCC and other staff members. Andrew Caduption and with me, Carlin Russell Carlson. And we are with Economic and Planning Systems. We have worked with you recently with a design workshop on a residential linkage program, and we are happy to be working with you again on the short-term rental analysis with potential recommendations for mitigation solutions. Just by way of background, very briefly, EPS works extensively through mountain communities like Picken County, and we have been doing that for a couple decades, and know the economic context, the natural setting context, and the interface between the two. And our goal is to how, how, how does a community get the economic benefit that is available from guest spending and do so in such a way that it preserves the sense of community and the natural setting in a way that, that, that locals can enjoy that. So in terms of what we have today, we've got about 15 slides. We'd like to talk with you for about 15 minutes and then turn most of our hour over to you so that we can hear your comments about the program. The goal of the study, you can see on the slide, on our next slide, one, understand the intensity of STR activity. This is a baseline part of the analysis, and that's where we are today. Number two, discuss impacts and what really stands out to the VOCC and the community in terms of impacts that are affecting community character. And then third and last, which would be the final part of our analysis, which extends beyond what we're really talking about today, is exploring mitigation solutions that the county can employ. In terms of our overview presentation, we've got four elements of existing conditions, the inventory, the geography, pricing, and occupancy. Then we'd like to ask what stands out to the VOCC from these existing conditions, and then discuss generally mitigation strategies, what is of interest to you based on pure communities, and also what's of interest from the discussion questions we'll have in the last slide.
All right, so we wanted to just kick things off with an overview of the current state of STRs in Picken County. This is going to be repetitive of a lot of the information in the packet, but we felt it was important to rehash this so that everyone can start from the same place when we're talking about the intensity of STR activity in the county. So as of early November, there were 73 active short-term rentals in Picken County. You can see in the chart on the right how these are distributed with the majority concentrated in the area of Aspen and along the Highway 82 corridor. There are also about 15% in the Crystal River Valley area, but our greatest concentration is going to be within the Aspen Community Plan area and specifically around there in Red Mountain, the East Urban Growth Boundary Area and Mid Brush Creek. So we'll run through some maps that illustrate this quickly. So you can see, these are the Picken County Plan areas. This refers to the County Strategic Plan, and we're going to use these to talk about the concentration of short-term rentals. So you can see there in dark blue, we've got the Aspen Community Plan area and the Crystal River Valley area that both really pop out. Those are the areas that have the most short-term rentals, and these green dots represent the location of those short-term rentals specifically. So you can see, starting kind of from the west in the Crystal River Valley, we've got a good concentration near Redstone of those STR properties, and those, again, make up 15% of the total STRs in the county. The bulk of it is going to be in Aspen, which accounts for 42% of the short-term rentals. Another 33% are in that line along Highway 82. And just to zoom in in that area a little bit further, you can see within the Aspen area, Red Mountain and the East Urban Growth Boundary Area, as well as Starwood, are where those STR activities are concentrated. So between Red Mountain and the East UGB is over half of all the STRs within the Aspen Plan area, and you can also see that Starwood and Brush Creek have similarly high intensity.
We wanted to understand a little bit more about what is going on in this inventory, and one of the things that we were curious about was pricing. So our methodology was to actually query using the search engines of Verbo and Airbnb. We also did Luxury, which is on the next slide, we'll get there in a minute, but we also used Sotheby's and QB to look and understand at the high end what's going on. So for New Year's Eve week on the left of winter peak, you can see the distribution of pricing of the Picken County STR inventory. You can see what that price looks like on an off-peak week in mid-winters in January. And then for summer, we queried 4th of July 2026 to understand, based on what was available, how the pricing shakes out. The font is small, but you can see, and you can track with your mouse, the $25,000 range under summer is the top of the, top of the chart. And what we have essentially is from 2,000, from $0 to $2,000 accounts for about 50% of the inventory. Then there's a jump up to $7,000, and that accounts for about 20% of the inventory. Then there's a jump from $7,000 to $10,000, and these are dollars per night. That accounts for 15% of the inventory, and then above $10,000, $10,000 to around just below $25,000, another 15% of the inventory. Now, if you look at the next slide, we specifically isolate what's going on with luxury, and we did a similar analysis for Sotheby's and QB. Sotheby's and QB don't operate the same as a platform for Verbo and Airbnb. So these are independent of season. This would be year-round. And you can see at the high end, we're just over $60,000 a night. Here, we've got about 30% of the inventory under $7,000, 50% of the inventory between $7,000 and $10,000, and then 20,000, 20% is above $10,000, reaching just, just over $60,000 a night.
Can I add one clarification?
In terms of utilization, we have-
Wait, I have a, I have a- I have a quick question here.
It's Picken County.
It's okay. I, I just-
I'm sorry, do you have a question?
I just want to clarify. You said $60,000 a night, correct? I just want the public to hear that. Okay. Does that come with a night? In shining armor?
It is, it is sizable. I mean, if you flip back one more slide, you can see that, if you look at summer peak, you know, here we have a slightly lower peak than what we're seeing with the luxury, but nevertheless, a bulk, a bulk of the inventory is rented for around $10,000 a night. Or, you know, on the lower side, around 2 grand a night. But these price points are not small.
And we should say also, the tax is pretty small, but in the summer and winter peak charts, there actually are a couple outliers that were removed that are over $30,000 a night. And that's on the normal sites, not the luxury listing sites.
And then just touching base real quickly on our luxury inventory, you can see a lot of it is focused around 5 to 10 grand a night with, you know, almost 20% over 10 grand, reaching as high as just over 60 grand a night. Utilization, we, it, we conducted research to understand how much the STR inventory is being utilized. And these data reflect nights that are available nights. So if a part-time resident is setting aside utilization of, of the unit for their own personal use, that is outside the equa-, the equation here. What this is, is reflects, the occupancy is the numbers of nights reserved over the total number of days available to potential renters or potential guests. Picken County is, has the lowest level of occupancy, which is right where it should be. It's got a smaller inventory, and it's one step removed from food and beverage, from transit, from some of the, you know, skiing amenities offered in Picken County. But nevertheless, it has a 30%, an average of a 30% occupancy from 2018 through 2023. In terms of mitigation options, on the next slide, these are considerations that we'd like to pose for you to be thinking about. The goal is to address impact and the intensity of STRs within Picken County. And there are a couple options that would, are available to the VOCC in terms of ways to limit intensity. And generally, license caps or concentration limits within specific geographies, these are tools that can be employed or implemented through land use regulations. A third is regulations pertaining to noise, trash parking. Those can be implemented through license requirements to the individual with very strict enforcement and, you know, three strikes and you're out, manage your guests, that kind of thing. The, then the last bullet here is options to address impacts on employment and housing. And there is an indirect connection between STRs and affordable housing, specifically in the form of the staff, the labor generated by guests, and then the corresponding housing demand that labor then puts on the housing inventory throughout the running forth. demand that labor then puts on the housing inventory throughout the running course. So these are the issues and your levers, if you will, that you can pull to affect the local landscape through policy.
So just to make these policy considerations a little bit more tangible, we wanted to go through what some of the peer communities have been implementing in terms of STRs. So for the next couple of slides, we relied on the survey that the Carr Association of Ski Towns cast, collected a year ago, to get a sense of where the pulse is on STR regulations. So every single community surveyed that currently requires licensing, as does Picking County. However, there was a bit of disagreement on whether or not there were caps to the number of licenses issued. About half of communities surveyed had caps, whether that's a county-wide cap, a town cap, or caps in certain zone districts. While the other half had unlimited numbers of short-term rentals permitted in the county or town. The other regulations that we saw last, were limits on the number of nights that were allowed, where occupancy limits are very common. We don't want more than a certain number of guests staying. However, limiting the term that, A, the term of a rental that someone can stay for, and also the number of nights that a property can be rented in one year, most communities are not currently regulating that. In Picking County, currently, there are three license categories and the maximum number of nights with the highest license category is 129, so about one-third of the year. Similarly, concentration limits were a little bit more rare, and that is just a way of controlling how close the short-term rental properties are together. So whether that's properties must be a certain number of feet apart, there can only be one short-term rental per block face, only a certain number in such-and-such zone district. These are all regulations that are designed to really spread short-term rentals out among a jurisdiction versus having them all be concentrated in one specific area. In terms of our regulations that generate revenue, we also saw quite a bit of diversity among the peer communities. So every single community right now, every community has licenses and every community collects the administrative fee based on that license. And that administrative fee takes care of the person who's running the program, you know, the cost of the software, things like that. All counties also, or all counties and towns rather in the survey, also collect sales tax and lodging tax from their short-term rentals. We also found that about one-third of the communities in the survey had an STR-specific excise tax. However, these were all municipalities, none of these were counties, which I think is important to keep in mind as we move into the rest of the discussion. And then another 10% had a regulatory fee differing from that tax. So most communities that we saw conducted some kind of fee study or a linkage study to determine what that fee is going to look like and what specific impacts that that fee is going to address, especially the housing for the employees that are generated as a result of the short-term rental activity. So we're going to go through two examples here. These are both county examples to make it more applicable to Picking County, but I'm happy to talk about any of the other communities that participated in this study. So starting with Summit County, they've been very proactive on regulating this. And a lot of what they've worked on is how to use license caps to control the density and concentration of STRs in the county while also acknowledging that STRs are an important source of lodging and of revenue in the county and the tourist areas. So what they've done is established two different categories of license, where type one is for locals only, and you need a proof of residency and employment in the county. Type two license is for everybody else. The type two licenses are capped within the neighborhood overlay zone, and the neighborhood overlay zones are generally areas where it's more community housing, less tourist and resort activity. And these caps are very based on the size, but generally the caps are set so that these more neighborhood, community areas aren't inundated with STRs. The county also has then, on the flip side, designated resort zones. These areas have no caps on the number of type two licenses. So essentially, they're saying, we're going to limit STR concentration here, but we acknowledge that STRs are important in these resort areas and we will allow as many as they want. The type one licenses, which are reserved for the locals, have no cap.
We have a question here, please. Carlin.
Yes.
So the type one license for locals, is that just if they live there, but if they own another house that they don't live in, is that also uncapped?
I'd have to look into the specific details on that, but you do need to live in the county and then also show proof of employment at least three-quarters of the time within Summit County.
But not proof.
Yeah, we'll double check, but I think the idea is that type one is owner occupied.
Yeah. It's, you know, we're going to be out of town for two weeks, we might as well rent out a spare bedroom.
But your question is, can one person own multiple, live locally and have multiple units?
Exactly.
All falling under type one? That, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
And I have a question too, related to Summit County. They have a lot of licenses, don't they?
There's actually no countywide cap on licenses. So the only caps are in the neighborhood overlay zones. And again, I have to look back at the specifics of the policy, but it ranges from, you know, in the tens of licenses to in the hundreds, depending on how large that zone is.
Yeah, because it's my understanding, it's my understanding that Summit County has a significant amount more than, obviously more than 73.
Yes, they have, their number is in the thousands somewhere. You can pull that up in just a second to get the details.
That's okay. I just want to clarify, you don't have to give me the
Yes, it's orders of magnitude larger than Picking County, to be sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we've got two slides left. We've got a Lake County overview and then just a series of questions for my consideration.
Yeah. So Lake County obviously has less of that intensive tourism than Summit County does, but they still wanted to really key into how to preserve the areas in the community where there's naturally occurring affordable housing, to protect that from intense STR activity. And then they were also concerned about the capacity of each homes. They have a really diligent septic inspection system before a license can be issued. But in terms of caps, they have a cap of 135 licenses available. This is much more in line with where Picking County is currently at. And as of last year, when the cap study was performed, they said that they had issued 134 of the 135 and had not heard significant pushback about where this number was set. Within the community housing overlay district, which covers areas of the county that are more affordable, there's a cap of 19. And the most licenses that any one person can have is two. So again, these policies are really designed to protect kind of more affordable community areas in the county while still allowing some intensity, but, you know, they decided there's a certain level in the county that we don't want to go past, and they stepped back down.
All right. Thank you, Carlin.
I do have a question. Do you, yeah, just related to Lake County, do you know how many total housing units they have?
Not off the top of my head.
That's a good question. We don't.
Okay, thanks.
But that's easy to find out, and we'll report that back.
You have a good percentage ratio.
Last slide, some discussion questions as a point of departure for our conversation this afternoon. Where do you see a degree of intensity generated by STRs that warrants a change to accounting policy? And is this overall, is this sub-areas, is this by season, is this by unit type? Fleshing that whole series of options out. And then a separate one, how significant are the impacts from STRs on labor demand and housing, and associated housing demand? Number three, any questions along the lines of what we've already covered in this conversation about additional data that we can provide that would be helpful? And then finally, we have been talking with brokers and doing community outreach. We're a big believer that data is fantastic and data that is ground truth with conversations with locals is even better. So, and our outreach thus far to brokers has aligned with, and we can summarize that for you, it was in the packet, we could certainly talk about that if you'd like. But we plan to do some focus groups in early December, reaching out to people who hold licenses and their representatives for the STRs and also the brokerage community that does a lot of the property management. So, and community members in general. So that will occur in early December. And are there anything, any issues that you would like us to probe specifically as we do that community outreach?
Just a question.
And with that, we'd love to hear questions and your direction.
Francie, yeah, can you maybe leave that slide up as we work through the discussion questions to be helpful, please? And then Francie has a question, go ahead.
Yeah. So the work that you're saying you're going to do, is that under contract with us, that you're doing that work?
Absolutely. And we are working closely with Nicole, Jeanette, and Alex. And the five of us, we see each other as a team. And we, you know, we're very integrated with the staff on all of these efforts.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. I can't get as much good of it.
I have a just generalized question.
Patty.
I'd like to see if we're seeing any complaints or any issues with intensity or too many nights in a neighborhood. I've only heard one from somebody who has a short-term rental in the city, and he was concerned that the county didn't have a tax, therefore people were more likely to rent in the city. No, people were more likely to rent in the county than in the city because they have to pay a higher price. But generally, people are paying a higher price in the city because of location rather than being out in the woods in the county. So I would, I'd like to know if we've had, I mean, we have 73 licenses. What are we doing? Are we having significant, we have a theme in complaints that we need to address? Or are we doing okay? Status quo.
There are 4,000 housing units in Lake County.
Oh, thank you. How many? 4,000 in Lake County.
STRs?
No, no, housing units. So a third of ours.
Well, to answer your question, I think it's status quo. I mean, we have a, you know, a handful, a complaint here or there. And, you know, once we eliminated the one in Woody Creek, that was the
It was a neighbor of mine.
You know, stepped out. We, you know, we get, maybe it went off here and there, but for the most part now, it's pretty status quo.
My other, my other issue is I think it's interesting to see the prices, see the location. It'd be interesting to know, San Red Mountain, I just drove up there yesterday to look at a construction site. And, and I'm wondering if the people who are really utilizing the STR program to rent out their units are the people we were trying to allow the ability to do that, people who've been here for a long time, who supplement their income, pay their property taxes with the revenue they make? Or if there's those people that own those 20,000 square foot homes and rent them out for $60,000 a night? Do they
At least there's at least one of those.
Do they really need to rent out their house? I mean, it's not us to judge that, but I think it's really interesting.
Yes.
I have a question. It might be for you, John, I'm not sure, but can individual caucuses change their master plan to exclude STR regulations?
So I believe they could, but those master plans are advisory to the board. And there, there is a clause within the resolution that matters of county-wide interests aren't necessarily going to be impacted by the master plans.
Are there, are we refusing new license applications?
Based on the basic requirements, yes. Mostly around the, the, the short-term rental history that they have to.
And how many do you think we've refused?
I would say about 20. Some of them are submit applications, but most of them is just, you know, inquiries. You know, do we qualify from, you know, from individuals and also from realtors who are, you know, looking to have a client that wants to purchase this home? Can we do that? So, I mean, you know, it's, I would say it's a range between 20 and 30 a year that people do inquire about that.
I have a point of clarification.
Okay. Yes, and then Francie, either hand it, I think.
Francie, can I just, this is broader than that, do you want to ask?
This is just about that.
Okay, I'll let you have to go.
This is about the requirement that you have to have had STRs up until 2023? Is that what it was?
2017 to 2022, a five-year period.
I, I would like us to seriously look at that clause because I think it's discriminatory and sort of not valid at this point, especially since we only have 73 STRs in the county. That's my thought.
I think it served a purpose, but we'll come back to that.
Yeah, that was my, that was my question is to, do we still holding to that? That's why we haven't had new applicants, because they weren't the owner during that timeframe, so they didn't rent them out, now they want to. And they could still come back and show, if they still owned their house, show that they rented it short-term during that timeframe and apply. We really haven't had anybody. And I think the reason we've had a lot of people denied is most likely because they hadn't rented them out before under short-term rental. And they just didn't understand, so they applied, not understanding the qualifications.
Well, last year, you heard two appeals. One was a new build and one was a current resident that just wanted to start, but they didn't have the history. And both of those cases were denied until we did an impact study. That was
One who came in who bought a place that had previously been short-term licensed, and we didn't allow it to transfer over to new ownership?
No, I don't believe that was it.
Did we allow that to happen?
They can transfer if
With the property, not with the owner.
The property, if the property has a history.
Not with the owner. The owner can't take their short-term license to another place.
Well, and, you know, if you recall, part of the purpose of doing that was so we actually had a sense of what was happening on the ground, you know, rather than being able to just sort of open it up to, you know, we wouldn't know how many people were doing it, you know, and how intense the activity was that was happening.
And we overestimated.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think, I think I'd be, I'm willing to revisit that, but I'd probably want it associated with some cap to the total number that we would issue.
Total number of those or the total nights rented?
The total number of STR licenses that we would issue.
New ones.
Total.
If we opened up the timeframe, you had to rent.
Yeah.
Well, no, there wouldn't be, because it wouldn't have been able to rent a short-term rental, so we'd just have to open it up to anybody.
But I'd like to have a cap. So even if we open it up to anyone, you're only going to bring in however many more than what we currently have.
74.
Would be something to, yeah. Seven, round, just round number, 75. So that, anyway, so I think that's a point of discussion for us to have. Yes, please.
Could I step back prior to that conversation? Kind of the caucus question? Just to add a little Is your mic on? Oh, no. My finger's on it, I just didn't touch it.
Just had to push down.
So back to the caucus question. Right now, no, there is no certain caucus areas, we've heard it from certain caucus areas that they would like to prohibit. The comp plan, you know, is trying to sort of establish policy related
They would like to prohibit STRs?
Certain caucus areas, yes. Do not appreciate having STRs in their areas. They may be areas that have them now or may not. I mean, again, I'm just sort of speaking very broadly. You know, we're looking through the comp plan to address STRs. And sort of broad, bigger, what's the appropriateness of STRs throughout the county, along with other things? Special events, STRs are the two things that are always popping up. Is this, do we want this throughout the county, do we not? That is part of a discussion we're having with the comp plan. And, right, well, I think, you know, definitely certain caucus areas have had those conversations as well. So again, nothing today has any restrictions specific to a caucus area, but I see that
I was talking about the opposite of a caucus area that doesn't want Picking County regulations on STRs imposed in their caucus. That's what I was asking.
You're talking about the other end of the
Yeah, so then, then back to John's response, right, it's a county-wide regulation. I was taking it the other way.
So beyond sort of global questions about the program, we can work through these. Are there, is there any areas that the degree of intensity is troublesome for the board? I'm sort of rewording question one. Greg.
Great, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I had to step out for a sec. The concern I have is that it seems clear that the intensity of labor involved in caring for the biggest, most expensive STRs perhaps isn't being accounted in the cost of the operation. If somebody, so that points me to the idea that there ought to be a tax on them, if that's possible. Just, just one, I'm toying with the idea. If we want the people who are using the most in terms of resources and carbon, embedded carbon, and people on the highway and clogging the highway with service workers to maintain the big house that's renting for $60,000 a night, are they paying their way? That's, that's the question. I don't know if there's, if that's a tax question, but I want to, I'd love, that's where I think the focus is. It seems like we don't have a lot of STRs to worry about. We're not like other communities that are overrun with them. I think we're managing them pretty well, so So part of me wants to say, well, where's the problem? But the problem is I identified is with the biggest, most expensive places, are they paying their way in, in community impacts?
They have to pay sales tax, don't they?
You have sales and lodging tax?
So they're paying that already?
We don't have a lodging tax.
No, we don't lodge any.
Not lodging, but sales.
But I don't think you can.
We can't, we can't assess a tax anyway, sorry.
Let's not jump over. Um, I, I have a question I'd like to understand a little bit, was the feedback from the Vision 2050 open houses? The way I'm interpreting that is the, the response was there's nowhere in the county where STRs are viable, which is a little bit different from, I think, how the board is taking the feedback that you've provided on how, how STRs are functioning in the county. And so I guess I just would like to understand how that input was generated a little bit more clearly.
What is it you're referring to?
I'm referring to the outreach summary, which is.
Attachment C.
Attachment C that, that at some of the open houses for twenty fifty when they discussed STRs in the county.
Yeah, so I, I facilitate the organization of that outreach activity at the open houses. So essentially, we used a countywide map indicating where the municipalities are, where there's areas of somewhat dense development in the rural area such as the urban growth boundary, the Aspen Village, just areas where there's more, Brush, Brush Creek Village, just areas where there's more clustered housing and then more dispersed housing so that folks could respond to the sort of, the density transect that you've heard about from our comp, our, our long-range team. And what folks did at that exercise was they were putting all the viable locations for short-term rentals inside municipal boundaries. So they would put them in Basalt, in Snowmass, in Aspen. And if someone was going to add a red pushpin, like this area is not viable for STR, they were instructed to leave a note as to why. And the, you know, the, the attachment really summarizes the concerns about, you know, our STRs taking away from workforce housing. Are, it, does the county have enough services to support that increased activity? So there were some assumptions that were made by folks leaving their post-it notes. Because I will say, on the flip side, just having conversations with Jeanette, there's plenty of folks who she's facilitating licenses for that actually need that income in order to stay in the valley. It's basically preventing them from putting their home on the market and potentially selling to a more of an investment-type property owner. So that, those types of comments net land in the Vision 2050 feedback like I was hoping that they would because we've had a handful of conversations just with the STR license holders. So, I don't know. It, no, no revelations, but that's the summary of the Vision, Vision 2050 feedback.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tag on to that. You know, that, it's interesting, I just remember before STRs came along, I kept hearing demands for more hotels. We need more hotels because we have such tourist demand, we need to build more hotels. And, and while there are some hotels in the hopper and things are apparently getting built, I haven't heard a lot of, of that clarion call for more hotels. And STRs has taken, has really filled in a, a huge demand there. Whether it's a good thing or not, you know, it, it certainly, I, I guess, if a house is, if the heat's on and the house is unused, is, that seems like a waste. And if it prevents a hotel from being built, another ho- big hotel, maybe that's a positive. So I don't see it as a, a complete pox on the community. I see it as something that certainly has value for the people whose incomes depend on it. But then also, boy, it's a great way of building non-hotels. It's, it's an interesting balance.
Patty?
Um, tax, excise tax. Kelly, look at you. We can't, municipalities can have excise taxes, counties cannot.
No, but there's a proposal for, to request authorities.
Yeah, but right now you can't. And anyway, it'd have to go to a vote. Any tax would. If the municipalities do an excise taxes, it has to go to a vote? Or can cities, do they have?
I think it has to go to a vote, because of table.
Yeah, so that's a point, but, and Greg, I wish we had control over what happens in the municipality in building bigger hotels. We, we don't seem to have that input allowed.
But the STRs may actually reduce the demand and, and change the economics so they're not as attractive to build big hotels.
That could be, but a lot of them, they're just taking an existing hotel and making it bigger if they're not new. So, I mean, that's what we're seeing on the city side of things. Snowmass is a little different, but, yeah, so. And I don't think you could separate out if you rent your house for, everybody would have to pay a tax if we were to pass a tax, if we were able to pass a tax. Everybody would have to pay, it couldn't be, if you rent yours for ten dollars a night, you don't have to pay the tax. They'd just pay a lower amount of tax, but, yeah, that would be an interesting conversation to have. I, I just, I don't see a problem with how we're running the program now. And I think maybe we should have a discussion about that timeframe of who could enter with a cap on the number of permits.
Can you tell Greg, he was gone for that, can you tell him?
Oh, sorry.
Oh. You want me to summarize?
Yes, please.
We were having some discussion about removing the requirement to have had to rent your place from twenty, demonstrate some rental history from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two and opening it up more broadly to folks who can't demonstrate that, but also pairing that with a cap on the number of licenses that would be issued. So more people would be eligible, but we wouldn't necessarily have more STRs.
So we're gonna tease them, but we're not gonna give it to them.
Well, I think a conversation about what the appropriate size cap might be is, would follow.
Yeah, that'd have to be part of it.
That decision.
Interesting thought, I'm not sure it.
I'd kinda like to just leave it alone, but, what'd you say, Greg?
I'm not sure that would result in, in an outcome that we would, were looking for. It depends, what, what's the outcome you're looking for?
Well, it would open it up to individuals who did not ever rent their home, but now wish to. Those can be individuals who've lived here forever, those can be individuals who have bought here recently, you know, they're, and you can put additional criteria. I think it's maybe just a, you know, does the board wish to revisit the criteria that we currently have in place for our qualification to get a license?
Nobody's asked me to do that, nobody's written us that I know of.
Yeah, they have.
Have they? Okay, I missed that. So I'm a little bit ambivalent, I'm not sure we need to fix something that doesn't appear to be broken to me yet. But if it appears broken to you, and you're coming to us to say, we, what can we do? Then certainly I'd consider that, I'd definitely consider it.
Well, I do think it would open it up to locals who want to rent out their home, who have not rented it before. If they've decided to do that because of taxes, or maybe now they're empty nesters and they wanna, you know, travel or whatever. It would open it up, and they haven't had prior history. I think it would open that up, so we'd have a little bit more, maybe we'd have seventy-five, no, we just.
To follow my question, do you know, have any idea how many people would come forward if they knew that that was possible?
I mean, just off of what I, when, talking to applicants, I would say around fifteen to twenty, possibly.
I'm gonna say three hundred.
But some of those are.
We could cap it so we couldn't issue three hundred licenses.
No, we can cap it, but then, then it was just like a tease.
No, it's, you get your act together and get your application first.
And then when you stepped out of the room, I, I did mention that last year you did hear two appeals of people who did not have history that wanted to come. And one was a, a new build, and then the other was a local resident that wanted to rent out their home. But because they didn't have history, and we wanted to wait to, or the board decided to wait till the impact study was complete before making any changes to the code.
I apologize again, I have to take this.
It's okay, Francie, go ahead.
Um, I, I think it would be a, a fair thing to do to remove that requirement because there were a lot of people who were unaware of that opportunity for their houses. You know, it's a fairly recent thing and not everybody keeps up on that. And also, I think people's life situations change, like maybe a husband died and so the woman doesn't have income anymore, or, you know, the children moved out and, you know, there could be all kinds of life changes that would make it more likely for them to request an STR without having done it before. But I also think there were a lot of people who were unaware that they could do that in that time period. And now they are like, well, heck, I'd love to have another six hundred dollars a month. In the Crystal River Valley, it looked like the average rental was like two hundred and fifty dollars or something. Was really cheap.
It's affordable.
Yeah.
For, for a night's stay, yeah.
Can I just go to?
That's all I had to say about that.
Yeah. I, I just see we have like fifteen minutes left, and there was one kind of nut I wanted this board to start on cracking. And it's like, what do you want the purpose of this program to be? So I'm hearing, we, we don't want rampant STRs. We also want to provide an opportunity for locals. So to me, that's kind of gearing, gearing me to look at, to unpack that Summit County regulation. The other thing I just want to point out when we did our intensity studies for the comprehensive plan is the areas with the largest homes are providing the most intensity, contributing to the most intensity in Picking County. Are those the areas that really need a cap?
Exactly.
So it'd be helpful to maybe just get to the root of what this board's purpose is so that we can take that and craft regulations and recommendations that would follow that spirit.
Okay. Would you like to react to Nicole's?
Well, I, I don't know how to react to that, but I know how to react to Francie. I agree that we should have a conversation to consider opening it up to people who didn't have the opportunity or didn't know or for whatever reason, and cap the number. As far as local, ask the county attorney, it's very difficult to, to define and to enforce and to follow up on local. We've had lawsuits related to some other issues where if you were local, you paid this, and if you were non-local, you paid that. So that would be a, a legal question on how we would go about that. But maybe we could say we're, we're opening up to people that don't have a history in this timeframe, to people who have owned their home for X amount of time. So it wasn't somebody running in, buying a place because they knew they could apply for a short-term rental. So that way, we would be facilitating people who had some vested interest in the community and longevity here. So that may solve that issue. As far as the impacts, you know, living at the bottom of Red Mountain, which is in Kelly's district, by the way, not mine. Have, have we been fielding a lot of complaints? Because there's, if we're talking intensity, that's intense up there. The roads are narrow, the houses are getting closer and closer together, and the use and the services that are required to maintain those homes. If we've been hearing complaints from people up there, I, we haven't heard them.
Nobody's home.
Yeah, to complain.
Well, I would like to understand, sorry, but anyway, that's. Field on that and then go to you.
Yeah, I was too, but you can go there.
Okay. It's just understand what information we've collected on the impacts from the current STRs as they're functioning already. You know, are we asking them, like, how often is your maid coming? You know, what other services are you guys providing here, or things like that?
I think, I would love for Andrew to chime in with some bullet points about his Cuvee interviews. And then we will get more numerical data to support.
Because that's really gonna, that's the impact study, right?
Yes.
So, um, our outreach thus far has covered about a hundred and twenty STRs in total. Now, when we talk to a broker, most brokers, most brokers are not really aware of the, where municipal boundaries fall, and so their responses are inclusive of the entire Picking County market, both inside the city, Snowmass, what have you, as well as unincorporated. But with that caveat, they have generally said that the price point of all of the inventory is such that there are very few complaints. It's a guest that is used to a high level of accommodation and treats the property well and treats the neighbors well. So some other counties close to the Front Range, some counties specifically, a different world from what that guest profile is all about. So very few complaints that they're aware of from neighbors or anything like that, or even managing trash, managing parking, all of that seems to go fine from their perspective. The, um, the, uh, the properties, especially the luxury Cuvee, so these that are in close proximity to the city of Aspen are ones to which there are a fair amount of concierge services provided for those guests. And that's when, in addition to basic house clean, house cleaning, landscaping, whatever you, there is another level of cooking classes, the Sunday A, the, the whole nine yards, and some of them, the list can get fairly extensive for this small set of homes that are very large, that are close in. So I think that there are, and, and I think the special events is a question that EPS and the staff team have been wanting to get a better handle on, and we will probe that in the outreach, both through a survey and through the focus groups, is, you know, how many special events are accommodated? Are owners aware of them? How do you manage the impacts? Because I think that's an area where you just get a concentration of activity that is inconsistent with what most of the STRs and obviously most of the residents, how they use their homes and what their neighborhoods are like.
Okay. I mean, do you want to go ahead?
It's about what Patty said, so if you want to go on the same strand. Okay, so I do, I don't like the idea of having to live in your home for a certain amount of time in order to be able to apply for an STR because, like, there are a lot of teachers and nurses and people like that, and doctors for that matter, who are trying to buy houses. And this is one way they can buy a house, is to be able to rent their house when they go on vacation for a week or rent out a room in their house on a short-term basis, or, you know, that kind of thing. So I do think it's removing one pathway to homeownership in our valley, which is really a hard place to buy a home.
Can I, can I, I don't necessarily disagree with that. I'm just concerned about the people we know who will come in here and buy a home just to flip it to short-term. Because now they have the opportunity to.
Well, what if they have to, it has to be their residence. Not that they have to live there twelve months, but they have to live there sometimes. I mean, like these conglomerates who come in and buy up houses, like that one that starts with a P, I can't remember what it's called, Pandora or something like that. You know, they actually buy houses and nobody lives with them.
Yeah.
They're always STRs.
That, that could be part of the discussion, I would not be, you know.
Okay, thanks.
Against that, yeah.
And, and just to follow up on Francie, I'm sorry, Kelly. Like, the folks that you're acknowledging could benefit from this are folks who would qualify as, for APCHA, for employment. So I think that there are ways that we, that, to, to, not, for the local question.
But there isn't APCHA housing in the Crystal Valley or the frying pan or, you know, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, it's an APCHA qualification because they're, they have local employment, and that would allow them.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
To be designated.
Yeah, well, just local employment, that's one way of looking at it. But not running it through APCHA.
No, no, no.
No, you can't, APCHA doesn't allow short-term rentals.
It's just the same standards.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think we've put out some ideas, I don't think we've fully coalesced around them yet. I think the impact study will help further refine whether or where and which problems need to be managed. A bit of my takeaway, which I know isn't quite as concrete as would be more helpful for you. But that's what I'm hearing. Patty?
Because, yeah, one of the questions, it, it's, well, one of the task three that's coming up is mitigation scenarios for short-term rental impacts. And what are we mitigating?
The impacts.
Yeah, I know, but.
Cars on the highway?
Yeah. How, how do you tie that? So that's a broader discussion, and I, like I'm, like I said, I haven't really not heard a lot of people complain. They're complaining about the construction, the vehicles next door more than they're complaining of the cars going to a short-term rental, I think. But I don't know.
Can't tell them apart sometime.
Yeah, the construction ones are trucks and they're dirty with tools.
If I can interject a question, and I know we're running short on time. But one of the topics was number two. There are impacts from STRs on labor demand and then the ripple effect in terms of impacts on the housing supply. Is that, and part of what we're hearing is that there aren't the conventional. Is that, and part of what we're hearing is that there aren't the conventional impacts related to noise, trash, home size or group party size. But I, we did hear among the DSCC members, what individual interested in mitigating employment impacts, is that of interest to more, to, is there a route to be in that?
I think so, for me.
I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, I think maybe we don't have clarity around how strong the impact on employee demand that there is. You know, I suppose we, we are already capturing a bunch of that in terms of our comprehensive studies, right? And our comprehensive plan studies about the locations of houses, the amount of impact that they're generating. I'm not, I'm less clear of if there is a amplifier to that because of short-term rental activity. That would be a question that I would have. I might be, am I, do you think I'm framing that appropriately? I would look to you both. And so it would help in this study, if there's a way to sort of further parse that out, then that's helpful to know, because that would be where we would hone in on the impact. I would be concerned about double mitigate, you know, duplication of mitigation on something that's related to the size of a home inherently and not necessarily additional STR use. So that, so yeah, I think that would be very helpful to come back with.
We can do that. And one thing I might add too, just to leave us in terms of our conversation about ways that we could mitigate that, questions around what the county can do in terms of taxes on rental inventory like this, short-term rental inventory. Also, we can talk a bit about other government experience, local government experience adopting fees. So there's a couple of different approaches. And we can help frame up a couple of options in the event that there is interest around this whole topic.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would personally probably say to not spend too much time on taxes, because I'm not sure we would go, I don't, I would probably not want us to go for a community-wide tax on 73 homes. You know, maybe the juice isn't quite worth the squeeze there. So like fees would be the place I would probably focus more. And I don't know if the rest.
And what counties are doing that municipality, I suppose. Greg?
I just wanted to, I was just reminded that the reason we're doing this all together is we're trying to, we're trying to mitigate the loss of affordable housing, workforce housing through this program. That's one of the goals of the program. The cost of creating a workforce housing unit for us is what? Is it a million bucks to build, to create one? So every time we decide we're going to go with an STR, we might be foregoing, you know, we may be creating the need for another million-dollar affordable housing unit. So there is a lot of value in suppressing the ubiquity of STRs. Because if we still have to figure out how to house people, we're paying an awful lot of money to do it. If somebody moves to the valley, they want to buy a house because they're trying to make ends meet, why can't they rent long-term to an employee? That, that's an option to them.
Can I respond to that, Kelly?
I'm sure.
So that is not the same thing, that's not how most STRs operate. Most STRs are people who go away for a week and they rent out their house for that week. Or they do, or they work somewhere else for a month and they rent out their house. It's not like they can house an employee year-round. They're not building houses that have a STR unit to it. So, and I really don't believe that STRs impact housing for employees because it's short-term. It's not things that are going to turn into long-term. There was one in Redstone that turned into a long-term rental. But they don't get to live in Redstone now and it makes them really sad.
The opposite problem is you have a long-term rental and you decide you can make more money by short-termining it. So you throw out the long-term employee and you short-term it. What does that do?
If you have what? What kind of unit? You mean like an apartment or something like that?
Well, we're talking about a full range here.
You mean like an ADU or something?
People have ADUs, you know, they have situations like that.
That you can't.
No.
Yeah, you can't. So I'm not quite sure. I can't picture what it is that you.
I think we need a fuller picture of this because I think the whole point of limiting STRs is so it doesn't destroy affordable housing.
I wouldn't say that was.
If I can interject with the data point?
Greg.
Please do.
The data do show that the Picken County, unincorporated Picken County, STRs are utilized on average 30% per year. So that means that the average owner is leaving their unit 100 nights, about 100 nights, a little bit more than that, over the course of the year. So that's the nature of the type of activity we're talking about.
Right, thank you. That's helpful.
That does help.
Patty?
Well, to be realistic here, guys, if I'm short-term renting my house for $60,000 a night, chances are employees like us could not afford to live there anyway. So I don't think that we're, you know, excluding local employees from living in that house on Red Mountain that's charging $60,000 a night. We could house most of the Picken County employees probably in that one house on Red Mountain, which we've talked about before, maybe we should be buying them and turning them into our own affordable housing. But yeah, so I think there are some that maybe, Greg, you're right, maybe they're thinking, well, I'm not going to have that long-term ski bum in my house. I'm going to rent it out, this, 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 and this. But I don't, I don't think that's enough of an impact to say that it's, it's the demand, at least not in our community, maybe in Summit County that's got 3,000 short-term rentals. I think they're really being hit by it more so than we are.
How many do we have?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Licensed.
Maybe, and I think again, this could be helpful in the impact study, understanding the types of units that are being STRed right now. You know, are they resident-owned, non-resident-owned? You know, whatever information that's relevant for that, that you collect on the license.
Drill that down.
I'm kind of concerned that anything we do is only going to make it harder or worse. I'm not convinced we're solving a problem, but I'm eager to see the results of this study.
I think Nicole's overarching question is, is, you know, what is, you know, now it's three years into it, we've gathered some data, we see the impact isn't, isn't maybe as, as intense as, as it anticipated when we first started the program. And so what is, what are the goals of, of the program in general? I mean, why, why are we having a, you know, ordinance and a licensing program? If, you know, what are we doing with the fees? How is it, how is this program improving the community?
Well, I mean, the program alone is improving the community. Before, we had nothing. We had zero restriction on, you know, on the activity. And so perhaps we've solved a problem that doesn't require additional solutions.
I'm just assuming that restrictions improve a community. I'm not sure I agree with you. Just because we had no restrictions before doesn't mean we've improved the community because we have restrictions now.
That's not her point.
I thought it was. Well, what was your point then?
My point is that.
You've solved it.
No, well, my point is that this wasn't a use that we wanted to run rampant. And we had no way of controlling that or affecting it either one way or the other. And now we do.
And I do believe that the rental history has kept the numbers low. I mean, that's, and a lot of people have opted, because the fees are high, and they've opted to do long-term rent. So I think that, I mean, that contributes to this, to this low number that we're at today.
So it's working.
Patty?
Well, I think in Kelly's side of it, with, the restrictions have helped because we had issues with people parking everywhere, with trash cans not being emptied, with bear issues, with, you know, people bonfire in the middle of red flag mornings, you know, out in their backyard, the noise issue, the lighting issues. And we've, from short-term rentals that weren't regulated at that time. So I think we've captured that into making neighborhoods more neighborhoodly in light of short-term rentals. And I think the push to 30 days for a lot of people, 31 days, 30 days?
31.
Yeah, has been a benefit, because a lot of them rent them for that amount of time, but the people aren't there. And so you have a quiet time. And I think we've made sure you're not overlapping, getting paid for that 30 days and the next 30 days starts 10 days after the first 30 days started. So we are monitoring that and keeping track of that. But I, I see some benefits in being able to short-term rent, having stated, and when I travel, when you're traveling with a family, with small children especially. And I think that brings people to communities, which we, we need some level of that opportunity for people to stay rather than staying in hotels that are extremely expensive these days and not always accommodating to kids that need to have a kitchen or a kitchenette or, because you can't afford to go out and eat and there's no place to take your kids anyway for most meals. So, trust me, I try.
Yeah.
And I usually end up paying too.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you know that one. Yeah, so thank you guys for the information. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I think we've given you more to think about and will continue. And I think have clearer direction when the impact study comes back.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We'll see you again.
Oh, and wait, wait, is Alex still on? I want to congratulate the honorable Alex Sanchez. He did get elected to the Silt Town Council. You go.
Congratulations.
Where?
Don't quit your deja.
Okay, next is county commissioner, right?
County manager.
All right, thank you. Nicole, were you trying to say one last thing?
Congrats, Alex.
You said you'd be back in the spring.
And over the winter, we'll come back with the final report. So we're going to have to take these.
Bring Alex with you next time. We like to see Alex.
Alex, you're coming next time, buddy.
As they're walking out, I just wanted to say, I think, you know, to some extent, we can celebrate the success of the intent of the program.
Right.
And we have to remember that it's, we've tried something and it seems to be working. And that's worth celebrating.
And that's what Alex always says. He goes, in theory, it's working, the, you know, keeping the numbers down. Keeping the integrity of the neighborhoods, that's, that was the goal, right?
Right.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks very like Irish Sishman.
Let's move on to open, or future agendas.
I have very little for future agendas. We're still working through board schedules on the airport visit, so should be ready to talk about that next week, knock on wood.
Cozen's mini-retreat?
And, oh, yes, Cozen's mini-retreat. Francie, I don't know if you saw a text to you. We're looking, let me pull up the dates. Thank you, Patty.
When did you send it to me?
It was last week. Text or email?
On my other phone.
Did I send it to the wrong, on your work phone, probably?
Yeah, but I do. Look at my work phone. Anyway, no, I don't, what did it say?
Give me just a second here. I want to make sure I got the dates right. Patty probably knows them off the top of her head.
I did fill out a doodle poll or something like that.
I had tomorrow and Friday, actually, John.
Yeah, so we moved away from those because Cozen was not able to make it. And so we, I think Amy had reached out with dates. They're looking at dates between Wednesday, December 10th and Friday, 12th, or the week of December 15th. And I think everyone had openings for.
The 10th is what I have. Or the 12th.
The 10th or the 12th, you know, seeing if either one of those dates worked for you. And sorry, Francie, if you didn't get that.
It's not your fault, it's mine.
Well, I may have written and forgotten to hit send. I've been known to do that, too.
Oh, can I do that?
Well, I did fill out something about dates, but that's now not the same dates. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're looking at December 10th.
Or 12th. I sworn I responded to that. They're both fine with me.
Okay. We'll, we'll see if they're still available on the 10th.
Okay.
That's all I've got for future agendas.
I may be able to participate on the 10th.
Great, wonderful. Patty?
Yeah, I think I already brought this up about needing more time for our chair and vice chair appointments. We only have 15 minutes and I think it might take us longer. It's scheduled for the 18th. Generally, either we do things in three minutes or we do them in 30 minutes, but that 15-minute seems to.
I think it'll be fine, but we can give more.
Yeah, and then I had a question on who's going to the CCI Winter Conference, which is December 1st through the 3rd. It's a Monday through Wednesday and it's, December 2nd is a work session regarding the airport and December 3rd is a regular meeting. So we need to know who's going to go.
I think Jeffrey was planning on going.
Jeffrey's going, I think. I'm not going.
I'm not going. And I think he was going to call in on the 3rd.
Yeah, I think he was going to try and call in, is what he told me also. And then from a staff perspective, I believe Kara's going and I'll be covering those meetings.
And then the only other thing I had too is on the 9th of December, it's a Tuesday, I will not be available until 1:00. So I don't know if we'll have exact that day or something important, but I just want to give you a heads up.
Did you say 2:00 or 1:00? It's scheduled to start at 1:00.
Right now, but.
I wonder why we don't have.
Generally, we have exact that.
I wonder why we don't have what?
I'm wondering why we don't have the exact block scheduled for that day.
Yeah, I just want to give you a heads up. I won't be available until, I could probably get here a little after 11, but we are usually wrapping up unless we work through lunch, if you get to eat lunch.
Yeah. I will say, I mean, we had talked as a board as trying to build in as much personnel and transition planning, you know, for each period of exec, so we might be meeting that day for that, but we'll be informed. So I would just plan exact time every Tuesday from now until the end of the year.
Yeah, that day I have been asked to supervise a first-grade field trip at ACES.
That'll be fun.
And I'm sorry, I cannot say no to that request.
That's great. Okay, other.
Just on the 9th also, if I could. I'm probably going to be attending remotely on the 9th.
Okay.
And it's possible I won't be able to be here.
The 9th of December.
9th of December, yep.
All right. To do that is the second reading of our budget.
And I'll try.
Okay, other future agenda items. All right, let's go on to the Transportation Coalition update.
Okay, I would like to do a little presentation without questions until I get through it, if that's okay, please, so that I can get through it today. And I did pass out this, there was some concern that there weren't any Down Valley people there, and just wanted you to see the breadth of the people that are at these meetings, and most of them are at every meeting. So I thought I'd go over the transportation goals, because we haven't been over that since they first published it last April. So they are as follows. Substantially reduce or eliminate traffic congestion and allow shorter travel times for residents, visitors, and commuters moving throughout Roaring Fork Valley. Two, focus initially on the implementable solutions for the Upper Valley, including the entrance to Aspen and Brush Creek that work equitably for every one Valley wide. Three, reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 25,000 tons per year, the equivalent of decreasing Castle Creek Bridge traffic by 5,000 cars per day. Reduce particulate matter 10 and PM 2.5 and other vehicle pollutants as well. Four, prioritize and incentivize public transit in all its forms. Five, reduce or eliminate rush hour traffic on Cemetery Lane, Smuggler Street, Smuggler Street, Oak Creek Road, and other streets and roads throughout the system. Oh, yes, Smuggler, the West End. Six, improve evacuation times and increase safety in all areas that transportation planning can influence. So then we have the categories that I started to tell you guys about last week. And so this is after listening to all the presentations, looking at systems all over the world and discussing them a lot. We've got 40 hours so far into this. So the category one is roadway improvements, and these include the entrance to Aspen, traffic enhancements. And Rachel is now talking about the record of decision, including changes at the roundabout so that it doesn't become one lane and some other things that we had thought previously couldn't be altered according to the record of decision, but now it turns out they can be. Roundabout. Um, roundabout improvements, adaptive traffic signals, dynamic message signs, possible grade separation intersection. Category two are, uh, enhanced public transit, so free Rafta buses from Rifle to Aspen, increase transit capacity and frequency, expand micro-transit like the Basalt Connect, expand park-and-ride capacity and intercept lots. Category three is an easy ride-sharing system to fill the nearly 35,000 empty seats that drive into Aspen each day, um, there's a great digital carpooling app in Europe, and France has one with 27 million registered users, our app would be overseen by Rafta. A strong casual carpooling system off, also overseen by Rafta, anyone could swing into a casual carpool stop at a Rafta bus station and pick up riders, like the hitchhiking stop we used to have on Main Street here in Aspen that, um, went away about 20 years ago. Employer-based carpool matches and subsidized van pools, a ride-share incentives program with subsidies through the app. Automated, uh, HOV verification, so no sheriff's deputies are needed to make the HOV lanes work, and expanded TDM, transportation demand management programs outside of Aspen, like the work that they're doing in Glenwood. Um, so all of those categories are incentives to ride a bus or a ride-share, um, but we've come to realize that we've pretty much maxed out, maxed out, most of our incentives, and so we have to have some disincentives, so, uh, category four is a disincentive to low occupancy vehicle at rush hour. Um, so, we've narrowed it down to two approaches, one are the dynamic hot lanes, um, they're used in Denver, and they're pretty successful down there apparently, they would be free-flowing lanes only for buses, high occupancy of three-plus people, um, or someone paying a fee, the fee would be dynamic, that is, it would go up or down at five-minute intervals, intervals, depending on traffic speed. HOT lanes would be calibrated never to slow the speed of Rafta buses, so do no harm to Rafta would be their guiding principle. And then, these revenues from those lanes would be generated to help pay for ride-share drivers' free buses, as examples. Uh, option B is incentive pricing with peak-hour congestion fees, that's a peak-hour dynamic congestion fee, and it would apply to both lanes, and be calibrated to maintain a set minimum speed for all traffic, including buses. The fee would kick in only when traffic speeds fell below a specific level, most of the time, the fee would be zero. Both options, um, provide multiple ways to easily access hot lanes or avoid paying a peak-hour congestion fee. For example, a driver could fill empty seats in her car by using the Carpool App, or swinging by a casual carpool stop to pick up riders, or if you don't want to drive, you could ride a free Rafta bus, use the Carpool App to ride with someone else, or catch a ride at a casual carpool stop. And so, the current question that we're looking at right now at the Coalition is, um, uh, to come, to reach consensus on unified, unified recommendation, which I think we'll probably get to, and then, it'll be up to elected officials. And we're looking to, we're gonna ask if we can be on the EOTC schedule, how do we do that, John? Um, so George was thinking about calling Linda, but does it need to come from an actual commissioners and county council person?
If, if it comes up through Linda, the managers can talk about it too, but it obviously carries more weight if it comes through an elected official.
Okay. All right, so that is my report today.
Questions for Francie?
Can I just add a little bit?
Greg.
Just add a little bit, um...
Almost called you George.
Call me George.
Greg.
Well, he's been gone a while. Um, uh, one of the things that has changed in the last nine years, since the last study, or however long it's been, uh, the technology has advanced incredibly with applications that, that work, um, other management of smart signals, dynamic sign management, uh, the apps that have come along have all really kind of popped up and flourished in the last, so we have, uh, a much larger palette of, of potential solutions, um, that we only dreamt about five or even seven years ago, and I think that's important to remember. The other part that I took away from, from it is that, these are all adjustable things, these aren't things that cost a lot in the way of infrastructure, a lot of it can be tweaked, you know, um, so it's, it's, it's changeable and tunable, and I think that's pretty, pretty important. Um, another one is that, the, the change in the last five to seven years since the last study is that, we have a lot more traffic now, um, on the highway than we did then, there's no question, there's more cars on the road, so, I, I think we have an opportunity to try some things, uh, without putting in a lot of expense, um, and, and, uh, we might actually reduce the congestion on the highway enough that it flows again, and, and so, uh, I would recommend that our board, uh, ask the EOTC to put it on the calendar, to have the presentation from the principals at the Transportation Coalition meeting.
Mm-hmm, I have a couple of things I forgot to say, if I could add them now.
Sure.
One is there are gonna be quite a bit of public outreach, they're gonna, they're having a meeting down-valley, the, um, steering committee with the mayor, and possibly the manager in Glenwood Springs and somewhere else, so there's going to be public outreach as well, public meetings, and we, we haven't really talked about what that's going to look like, and, um, and then I would say the other difference between 2017 and now is that, some of these, uh, systems have been implemented in other places, so we have, um, models to look at.
We don't have to be first.
Um, a couple of questions, do, and do these recommendations come with proposed implementation plans?
Well, I imagine they will, um, we'll know more after the next meeting, cause that's where we're actually gonna talk about what is going to be recommended, and what kind of processes do we see in terms of bringing in the public, and making sure that the down-valley communities, um, feel like they're gonna be benefiting from this, which they will. The one thing about the hot lane, though, that I will say, we've talked about it at the table quite a bit, is that it will definitely be a problem in Glenwood, if it's, if it goes all the way down-valley in the afternoons, because there'll be some people who pay the fee, but then, to be in the hot lane, or who get on the bus, or for whatever reason, but then the left lane will just be one lane, and it could be even worse than it is now. That's one possibility that we've talked about, so we definitely want to wa- work that out with Glenwood people and stuff.
Right, I mean, some of the ideas that I think come to mind would be, um, like, payment incentives for early adopters, you know, for carpools, like, you're the first to sign up, thousand bucks to the first hundred people who sign up to be a carpool, and another thousand bucks when you've transported 20 people, you know, just things like that, cause I feel like it's one of those where it's like, you could be like, well, you go first, you know, um...
Yeah.
So, I don't know, so just, um, incentives along those lines, or reward-type things, um, to get people en- engaged and interested in providing that service.
We did talk about that in terms of students going to Aspen.
Well, and this was my next question is, you know, the, the slowing of traffic, or the, the reduction in traffic when school is out is so palpable, you know, and so it's hard to not just assume that so much of the schools is generating, and you know, I'm, there's, there's offshoots, the whole family goes on vacation, so now you have two working parents that aren't coming into Aspen, like, I recognize that it's not as simple as saying school's out and therefore traffic's better, but there is such a just palpable reduction that I'm curious as to what solutions are relative to maintaining that reduction more systemically through the year.
Well, Farin is on the committee, and he's, he's really working to try and make this work, like, they have, I think it's like seniors are the only ones who can drive their own cars now, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's the way it is in, um, I think that's the way, it would be great if it could be in Carverdale, where the end-of-the-day, school day traffic is insane.
Basalt High.
But, um, the, the girl who went, she's a woman now, but who went to Aspen High, I forget her name, who's the transportation person there.
McCaffrey.
Yes, they've done a lot of studies about how they can influence kids driving to school and parents driving their kids to school, and Michael Miracle, that's his pet peeve, is the kids who don't get on the bus, the parents who say, my kid doesn't need to get on the bus, I'll just drive them, you know, so, it's definitely top of mind, and we've talked about, you know, how to make it work, like, especially with the congestion, so, if you live in Aspen and you choose to drive your kid to school, you're coming out of Aspen, so would a congestion fee apply, so, you know, maybe so, if it's between 8:30 and 9:00 in the morning, you know, something like that. So, they're thinking about it, and we've talked about it, I wouldn't say we have anything specific about that, can you think of anything specific we've come up with for the student issue?
Um, only that, it was about 50, 50 families driving their kids to school are a big part of the problem, of, of the congestion in the mornings.
Yep.
So, 50 cars could make a big difference.
Yeah.
Well, and I would say it doesn't really matter which direction you're coming from when you enter the roundabout.
That's right.
You're clogging the roundabout, you know, um, anyway, Patty.
Yeah, um, did anybody bring up the fact, and I have, I think it's still a law, for young drivers, you can't carpool, you can only have X amount of kids.
That's right, you have to be 18, or to have other teenagers in the car.
Yeah, there's an age bracket, so, you couldn't say you can drive to school if you bring three other kids with you or two other kids, I think it's a violation of state law, so...
But parents could carpool.
Yeah, but if that, oh, surprise, that hasn't come up, maybe they just didn't think about it, but...
Yeah, that's good, good point, forgot about that. Yeah, my dad used to drive us to school, and we'd pick up four people on the way, every day.
And put them in the back of the pickup truck, right?
That's right.
No, we were not far away from Ranchers back then. He worked for Procter and Gamble.
I paid no attention to it.
We were suburban all the way.
Well, now it's a law.
Yeah.
You will learn that when your children are driving.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks for that, Patty, I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
There are a lot of wrinkles to be worked out, but...
And I...
Framework is really solid, I think.
I just have to add that I drive by myself, cause I'm alone, with my dog, and we, I'd have to pay somebody a lot of money to get in my car with my dog and all my dog hair. So, so I'm gonna have to pay more because I have a dog that sheds fine white hair, I'm not sure I'm gonna support that one.
Yeah, but you'd get paid more by other people, you'd get more, so, uh, one of the things that these apps do now is they can screen, like, you can put in the app that you only want a kid in the car with a female driver, or you only want to pick up females, or, uh, you want to ride with somebody who doesn't like to talk, you could put those kinds of preferences in.
I'll carpool, I'll carpool your dog.
Yeah.
And they can shed all they want.
All right, well, um, you know, definitely support the perseverance of finding solutions and throw it to the wall and see what sticks, right?
It'll be after the first of the year, EOTC.
So, the question for us is...
EOTC.
To wel- to invite this presentation to us, to...
To the EOTC would be great.
Okay, as opposed to going to three?
Yeah, not going to three different places, but going to the EOTC.
I'm happy to...
After the first of the year.
Share with our colleagues and Linda that we would welcome a presentation to...
That'd be great, Kelly, thank you.
But, is that...
We'd actually ask for a...
I don't want a special meeting between now and the holidays. No, no, no.
No, this is at our January meeting.
Ask for a presentation.
I think it's January.
Does that work?
So, yeah, we have, we have a meeting December 4th.
Well, no, I, I do, cause I, I'm looking specifically to Patty, honestly, because, and I'll ask Jeffrey as well, because it, we had concerns at the beginning that there was sort of a full press on the board, you know, because you both serve on the committee, that I think it would be fair for...
I, I would love to.
The direction to come from the three of us that are not on the committee, so it's a more wholehearted...
I wouldn't love to, but I will definitely enjoy, I don't know if that's my word, I will...
Indulge.
...enjoy their presentation, I, I'll be there, well, maybe.
Would you be more comfortable if they presented to this board?
No, I think doing EOTC would be...
So, we have one more meeting, December 4th, in Basalt, it's the only one that's not at Aspen CMC, and, uh, and then a possible extended meeting in January, maybe not everybody has to attend, but that's where we are right now.
Okay. Do you have that direction, should I follow up with a note to Linda?
Um, I can follow up with a note to Linda, do you want us to reach out to anyone else?
What do you mean?
Jurisdictions, uh, other...
Oh, I assume all their jurisdictions are going to ask them, right?
Okay.
Well, I don't know if they are.
I don't think they would.
Susan probably will, she's very enthusiastic, she probably will.
Who?
Susan Merle.
And yes, John, please.
Rachel will, of course.
Yeah, well, yeah, they will.
Let's all talk.
Okay, open discussion.
Maybe copy them?
I have a really interesting open discussion.
Uh, probably do the managers.
Yeah.
And I'm sure staff is not gonna be very happy with me. I got to thinking about the additional 1,400 square feet at the Dispatch new center in Elgabelle, I know we're far down the line and all that, but, what about considering using that additional, not pre-planned, it came in at the last, square footage for housing, putting maybe two small housing units, and paying for it out of our housing money, and put those in that additional square footage instead of having a big facility that we're having to manage and maintain and operate and utilities, and providing housing priority being to Dispatch or to first responders, I think it's a great idea.
It's a good idea.
I don't have a problem with it, at least to talk about it.
I know, would mean backtracking a little bit on the architectural stuff, but why proceed in doing something that we don't necessarily need when we might be able to slow it down and get something we do need?
So, I can't respond to that right now.
I could tell from the look on your face.
Yeah, we, we, you know, would have to look into what that would mean, um, for the project, and also the fire department project, because we're just part, really, of, of that.
Well, if we need to talk with Scott Thompson, I'd be more than happy to.
But, I, I think that may be confusing to have, um, but we can, we can certainly make the inquiry and bring more information back.
Well, and they could, you know, we could offer them one of the units, but I know they have some really small units that they rent out, and they're in the back section of the fire station now at, in Elgabelle, so, we'd just be adding to that.
Yeah, I, I think some of the challenges would be, obviously, we'd have to go back through entitlement and all that stuff.
But...
What do you mean?
It's not approv- uh, through Eagle County, um, that, they, they've approved a, a footprint, and I believe...
It would be in the footprint.
I believe, well, I understand, but it's a different use, um, within that footprint, so we'd have to look at that.
Kelly...
Greg.
Can, um, I would love to be able to ask them, did they consider putting housing in that spot, and if not, why not, and let's start there, because that may just solve a lot of brain damage in the reopening it.
Yeah, that, that was a conversation.
But I don't know.
Yeah, that, that was a conversation, um, on the site, not integrated the way that, that is being proposed now.
Cause this additional 1,400 just came up, it wasn't part of the original, they just expanded the interior for the Dispatch Center, so they have a lounge, and they have a relaxation room, and they have an office space, and they have a lot of separation between their Dispatch actual centers, which is, again, it's a cost to maintain and operate that we might be reducing, and it would also allow us to use a different fund to fund the housing there. Creative thinking to solve housing problems.
Please look into it, thank you. I know your reaction's like, oh, Boris, you're such a vein in the butt.
Well, I'm surprised nobody thought of it, that it took me this long to come up with.
And then there's also the Maroon Bells.
I'd be surprised if they didn't think of it, but why would they have eliminated it?
That's why you're going.
Maybe they just thought, oh, let's just push that law out.
Oh, they'll have a different forest to contend with.
Yeah.
Other open discussion?
Um, be sure to look at the sky in a couple hours.
Yes, I'm so excited.
It's getting a little cloudy, I don't know if that'll obscure or make it even prettier. I did want to let you on, so, I feel like we let each other know when we're corred, so, Lee Mulkey has corred me for years of emails, um, at both APSCA and the county, so, county attorney's office is handling that.
Okay.
Kelly, when I first took office many years ago, I got corred, and I had, I was really new to using computers and email, and I just said, send him everything, my mother's spaghetti recipe, my sister's chocolate cookies, I said, they can help.
Well, I think we're a little more sophisticated.
I know. I'm still not, so...
All right, if there's no other open discussion, John, no? Okay, all right, we'll adjourn our work session, and we'll see you all next Tuesday, thank you.
Thanks.